House meeting to order at six thirty P M. And by just saying, the two of the Governor Baker's March twelve twenty twenty order for spending certain provisions, the open meeting law, a law chapter thirty eight, section eighteen, and the Governor's March fifteen twenty twenty order imposing certain limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the North Reading School Committee is being conducted via remote participation from the public. No one person attended, but the members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for in the order. So, thank you everybody for being here tonight. We have a lot on the agenda. I'll just kind of say for anybody from the public, we're going to go a little bit out of order, just to kind of give you the order tonight. We're going to start with public input and student report, and then we're going to go to our guests, so we don't keep them for too long. We have members of the vote in the C I T here, and then we'll go to the regular agenda as posted. We're going to begin with any public input. Anybody have anything they would like to talk about that is not on the agenda? Please raise your hand, chant, unmute something. Okay, I hear nothing, so we're going to move on to the student report. Did not go through, actually, I should probably state for the record that all members of the school committee are here right now, so, and Dr. Daley is the superintendent, and his assistant superintendent Michael Connelly are here as well. So we're going to go to the student report, and Chevy Street Cop, that leads us here with us tonight, past the twenty twenty two. Hey Chevy, hi Chevy, do you want to do the student report?
Yeah, of course, thank you. Um, just starting out with a quick rundown of some things that I do at high school right now. Uh, to start out, we're in a long season, and now volleyball cheerleading has started up on their practices, and are working to find a safe way to continue to do that. In addition, all the fields have been cleared for football, and that season is starting to start up online. Um, in terms of club activities, Team Care is working on a project right now, and they are creating a card and a video message, and compiling care packages for patients who are there. Um, in addition, youth action teams, social activism clubs are working together on an exhibition to the state contest to submit a P S A project around the Florida Southwest. Um, for academic matters, the S A T for juniors is to be held in early April at M R H S, and freshman sophomore coursework are underway, um, with junior coursework actually being closed. Um, in addition, some of AP testing dates have just are coming out as of now, and these dates are being modified to provide multiple testing options for schools to use for. Um, and finally, the M C A F for juniors, freshman sophomores are also coming up, and juniors will be taking the M C A F this year to make up for missing the same guys test last year due to COVID. Um, I also thought I would touch a little bit on some of the new plans that the schools implemented in COVID, as well as some students' input on this topic. Um, after asking some of my peers to give their thoughts on their times, the overwhelming majority stood for the idea of keeping the eight thirty start time for the rest of this school year and into coming years. Um, and many students claimed that this later start time allowed that they were late in schoolwork, and they were able to sleep in and not compromise on sleep. Students also made the case that it's really easy to adjust to a later start time, as they are already in class to sleep in, but if we were to revert to a better early start time in school, a girl with an actually an earlier start time would be very difficult to adapt to. Um, another large concern with later school times that many people have expressed is that students would get out of school later, and that this would push extracurricular activities and sports to later times. However, after talking with some student athletes, many said they didn't feel like they got this funding later start time, and they support that policy. In terms of the new policy of returning full time to school or staying to be remote in the model, many students did express some concern about large numbers in school, and some asserted the idea that there shouldn't be a rush to get students back to class this year. Um, although many have conceded that productivity in class would increase if school returns and learning, and that if the state mandated the new change to be safe, that they would trust that those adjustments. Um, another said that a stark change in schedule could be harmful for students who've gotten used to this so far, but also conceded that productivity would increase if we were back to class. Um, kind of moving on from that quickly, I walked up, I was just going to mention a quick student report, so my work history was worked on last term, and this utilized virtual learning, and it was virtually really effective. Um, with a software that was able to simulate the museum experience, students were told to design their own, well researched museum exhibit pertaining to the Holocaust, and in a way, we couldn't, uh, dioramas or digital paper, um, for exhibiting away. My peers agreed that this was a square that allowed us to work on this project, which was more than a possibility. And that's kind of all after this time of it.
Thank you very much. Anybody have any questions, Chevy? Excellent report, and I see that Dr. Daley got the message to you. I wanted to hear any thoughts on some of the things on the agenda tonight, so I appreciate the feedback and halfing from your colleagues. Yeah, Dr. Daley.
So I just wanted to share, uh, Shadani and I and the other student reps in the school committee discussed, we are working on a student survey, uh, as well that would look similar to what you sent out to parents and families, because I, I want to get the, I really appreciate the information she's collected, but I think we can do that maybe for all middle and high school students, uh, to collect some more information. So I've asked them to work with me to craft that survey, and another one of our goals is to involve, have you been aware of what we're doing, and I think they're excited to be a part of that process. So I appreciate what she shared tonight, and I think we can expand on that in the company.
Excellent, excellent. Okay, and as always, Chevy, you're welcome to stay as long as you want, and play into anything, or if you have homework to do, that's fine as well. So we're going to move on before you reopen, and as I mentioned at the beginning, I'd like to start with the members of the public that were invited for different topics, and so we're going to start with the, we have some representatives here from the Northeast Metropolitan Regional Vocational High School, and so, I have a number of people here, and they would like to, I don't know who wants to speak first, but if you want to unmute him, I'll turn it over to you.
Uh, yes, hi, this is Judy. Um, again, I want to thank you for having us, we always look forward to this every year. I'm sure your biggest concerns are how we're doing with the COVID, um, and because you're getting the school back up and running, and also where we are with the new school building project. So at this time, I'd like to turn it over to Dave DeGarry, so that he can address those questions.
Sure, thanks Judy. Can everyone hear okay?
Yes, sir.
Oh, great, great. So I also have James Baccone, our finance director, on with us, and Dr. Cesarella, our principal, she's here as well. Um, my wingman and wingwoman, in case I get jammed up with some questions. Um, but I, I think, you know, in North Reading and Northeast are sharing a lot of the same issues, obviously with the pandemic, trying to get as many kids back into school as possible. Being very excited about the prospect of bringing more students back. Currently, we are a hybrid district. We, um, have our students in about fifty percent capacity, and going into third trimester, we're going to try to increase that a bit, and bring some of the vocational students in a little bit more. One challenge that we have, and we've had all, the issue, trying to bus in all twelve hundred students from twelve different communities, it's been a, a challenge. Um, as you know, there are certain busin guidelines now that make it difficult to, um, you know, to deal with transportation. But we do our best, and we look forward to getting our students in safely. So that's where we're at with, with the pandemic. Um, some exciting news is that we are underway, our, you know, we've been coming, I think, since Judy's first year as, as a representative, and it was a dream, you know, five, six years ago, when we said that we were going to do our best, maybe get accepted into the M S B A grant project, but not only are we now accepted, we're actually in module four, which is the schematic design, which is really our last piece prior to approval to the school. So we should know, um, at the August M S B A meeting, if our project is accepted, which we are fully certain it will be, it's more a matter of them looking at our designs in our estimates and letting us know how much the grant will be for. So at our previous meeting with the M S B A, they approved the plan to allow us to build for sixteen hundred students. So right now, we have about twelve hundred and fifty students. Um, because our waiting list was so great, it, it only made sense to try to build the school big enough to cut that waiting list down. Initially, we had hoped upon a school that would fit over seventeen hundred, but when we looked at the math and looked at the impact it would have on our community, especially our inner city communities, where our highest population, where we knew that it would be too challenging. So after speaking to Tom and Amy Camers, and then presenting to M S B A, we've compromised for sixteen hundred, and we feel that will dramatically cut the waitlist down and be able to build a great school. So we are very excited. It would be coming to a vote this fall. So after the August meeting, um, the M S B A will tell us how much they believe the school costs. Um, we, I will go to my school committee in September and ask them to vote to approve the project and to approve a barn to that project. I'm very confident they will approve that. At that point, the cities and towns have six days meet, they want to vote against the project. So many of the cities and towns, when there is a regional project, if there's a huge impact, um, don't always go to a vote. Sometimes it's more possible to have a special town meeting than it is to pay the, um, extra money per student. So we expect probably fifty percent of our cities and towns will have a town meeting, um, or a city council meeting. If they vote yes, great. If we get a no vote, then we would have to go to a, a special election, a popular election, which we are prepared to do, because we understand to get a unanimous best vote from twelve cities and towns, to the challenge, however, we're pretty confident when we, you know, explain the needs we have and the fiscal impact that we will be supported, but in case we're not, we are ready to go to an election. Um, but it's very exciting. We're just beginning the process, we're actually designing the details of the actual school, and I know, um, North Reading very recently went through a similar situation, and you know how stressful it can be, and I've toured the North Reading, um, high school a couple of times, the middle school, so I've got a lot of our ideas, our plans, that's going to be based on a few things I'm stealing from, from your school, and I'm sure you won't mind about that. Another base, I can open up to any questions or any comments for any of us, that'd be great.
Excellent, thank you very much, Mr. DeGarry. A kind of question. I'll, I'll ask a question or two, and since I know we have masks on, nobody can tell who's talking, I'll try to. This is Scott Buckley. Um, first question is just, you mentioned the, the transportation challenges with COVID, but with the vocational, I would assume that there'd be a lot of additional challenges versus a, a traditional high school, because there are a lot of the programs hands on, and how, how have you been able to deal with a hybrid approach with some of the programs that you brought?
Yeah, well, you know, surprisingly, because vocational shops are required to be much larger than classrooms, when initially, when we went in to do our three to six foot measurements, we were actually fine with all the vocational programs. We had to put plans and, obviously, we're using tools, we had to change our policies and procedures, um, we ordered some, some special touchpads that they, they carry in a lot of hospitals and operating rooms, that would kill germs instantaneously, so we had those special, you know, they, they look like stickers, but again, they're for sanitizing, and we were able to put those on doors, on equipment, on tools. So believe it or not, it's really been, um, the large facilities and the smaller classroom space that caused us the largest challenge, other than transportation, um, as far as getting the kids in.
Excellent, excellent, and then, everything about the new project sounds great. My only other question, the last couple times you've been here, you've spoken about the summer program, and kind of like the introduction, is that, is that still to run it this year or not?
Yeah, we did, we ran it virtually, and amazingly, we probably had our highest number applicants who attended the summer program, and parents were thrilled at that point, because what we had done, um, which was a little different from a regular summer program, is we actually made chips up for all of our incoming ninth graders that had all of the supplies necessary and the tools necessary to do a hands-on project at home. So for parents to, to see kids actually working on physical things and not just staring at a screen, listening to an instructor, I think it brought a little bit of excitement on, you know, coming into Northeast in the fall, knowing that even if we do have to go remote, that the students will be active, and not just, as we all know, staring at a screen. Um, and so it was a huge success. Uh, I'm, I was as shocked as everybody, but it, it's definitely not going to be as good as what it's going to be this summer, when hopefully we get the kids back in here and, um, start working again.
Excellent. Any other questions? Janine, Janine Embriano.
Hi, I just want. Oh, sorry, I forgot about that. Hi, I just wanted to say congratulations, I'm glad that you guys have gotten this far, I hope it goes through.
Thanks so much, Janine.
Uh, Mr. Connelly.
Great, thank you, hi. Good evening, this is my colleague. I just wanted to, um, mention, well, picking up the opportunity we have each of you here, that, um, you recently, just this past week, your, your team of, uh, with Richard McGinnis and Dizzy Carrugio, have, with the students have started to work on our, I don't know, project as a softball fielder, so, I know that, uh, because of the pandemic delayed about a year, but we are so pleased to be part of each of you in that, in that effort, and, um, it's exciting to see that project has started, and the team's activity down there. Very, um, confident that it's going to be a very successful project, and a significant upgrade for that facility and for the softball, not only the, the varsity, our freshman team here, but for the community as well. So I just, I did want to take the opportunity to thank you and your, your team for working with us on that, and kind of persevering and staying with us as we, um, go through the pandemic delays and the challenges, so it's exciting to see that project, um, take shape this week.
Great.
I would like, I, I don't like to comment on that, I, I'm excited about them doing that, and that is something that this school committee, our fee school committee is, uh, really adamant about doing projects in our cities and towns. And we take great, like that, the kids get really excited about doing it too. Am I right, Dave?
Oh, absolutely, and I actually got a call from, you know, one of the, um, our consultants who is, um, looking forward to a, a press release or some sort of news article, um, about the, the two school systems collaborating like we are, so, yeah, so stay tuned for that, I hope to see that in one of the North Reading, uh, newspapers pretty soon.
Thank you so much. Excellent, okay, no more questions. Thank you very much, everyone, and good luck out on the project, and keep it posted.
Okay, thanks, everybody, take care, take care.
Thank you. Good night.
Good night, Judy. Okay, so moving on to other guest, I believe we have somebody here from the community next to you, I'm guessing Amy Luckworth, the lady to speak, or Amy, are you up, you're under North Reading. Hi, Amy, proud V C grad as well, so I'll, um, turn it over to you.
Thank you, I think Dr. Daley actually has, um, the presentation, unless you need me to show it. Um, I'll, I'll get started. So if you can believe, we are fully in our fifth year of the drug community grant program, this is something that has had, um, support from the school committee since, since our application, actually, so going beyond five years. Um, I want to think, first give you a very brief update about what's going on with that grant. It is set to expire at the end of September of this year. We are planning on reapplying the additional five years of funding, however, unfortunately, the grant was set to release about four weeks ago, three weeks ago, and it still has not been released by the feds for application. They have reassured us, though, that it will be, um, available to apply, but of course, we're not guaranteeing that additional funding. It will be a competitive grant again, and so as a backup plan, we are hoping to propose, um, incorporating our full drug-free community budget of a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars into the town budget, but that will be, um, discussed until our town meeting. So, um, that is our contingency plan. And, uh, Dr. Daley and I tonight, we're just going to review with you our request to implement the core measurement survey. Um, just as a reminder to everybody, this is information that we collect every year, um, and it shows, basically, it's very difficult to measure our work, except in this area. We're able to collect, um, data about grade six through twelve each year. It also reflects the work that the volunteers do through the, through the coalition, and I have to mention, Mrs. Embriano has been a very active member of the coalition for many, thank you for waving there, um, very active, and it's, it's been great to have the participation of the school members as well. Mrs. Conan is facilitating a project for us right now to assist getting education into fifth grade on vaping. So, um, that, sorry, back to the, to the, um, the core measurement survey, each year we're, we're required to collect data across four substances, alcohol, tobacco, marijuana, and prescription drug use, but in North Reading, we feel that we need to separate vaping into its own, whereas the, we've talked a lot about that over the past few years. We actually collect data across five substances. We have four questions that we are required to ask. The first is your past thirty days use. The second has to do with perception of risk or harm, so basically, if you were to take these substances, do you think you're doing, or to how I would agree, do you think you're doing harm to your body? And the third and fourth questions are related to, um, your perception of what your parents or adults would think if they found out that you're using, and, uh, what do your, what would your peers think if they found out? And this all ties into, scientifically ties into, an increased probability of, of, uh, students using. So if conditions were favorable in the home that, you know, they felt their parent would think no big deal, let's say if they use marijuana, or their peers thought it was very common to use marijuana, for example, that student would be more likely to use. Um, so this is why we collect that data. It's also important for us to look at first age, or age of first use, so what age did you first start using? Um, and this year, we are significantly scaling back the survey. Last year, average amount of questions, it was slightly different from middle school and high school, it was on thirty-three questions total, and this year, I believe, uh, we're going to be doing fifteen questions. All the sixteen, though, I believe eleven are unique, and the reason that's a different, um, measurement is because sometimes when you, when you scroll down on the survey, we separate the question into three, just so that the student would scroll down and see what the possible answers might be. Um, Dr. Daley, do you want to talk about the implementation plan?
Sure, just trying to bring it up on the screen, but I'm having a little trouble. Um, but we are planning, the high school has already sent out a, a form for the staff just proactively, because they do, based on some upcoming events, they want to try to have this, uh, take place next week, so they've sort of sent out information, the possibility if they're pending approval tonight, uh, will be, be off that provision. Middle school is looking to do this, uh, sort of the week of the night, sort of come up with it. So we have plans to roll this out at, uh, multiple grade levels, I know that it was important for, um, to get students both at middle school, but also at, um, the lower ninth, tenth grade, also the upper, both, they have a plan to get, um, get additional, um, students in all those levels. Kenny, for tonight, I did share the questions, see with some of that information, we, in the past, added additional questions to the survey, and this year, it's often gets it streamlined to what, uh, what is coming from, from the group, and it's already deeply tested. Again, I know there's always a question about is there an off that provision, there is, it's very clear, it's a formal form, folks can fill out, we have some coming up already, so I know that it's, it's working, that will come from middle school soon, and starting from high school. And the second thing being, the students are both very comfortable with these questions, they've vetted them, and you. Very much.
Thanks, I'm not sure, I couldn't hear you entirely, but I'm not sure if you added that the student has the option to begin the survey, stop it at any point, or even skip questions, I'm not sure. If you, you mentioned that, I couldn't hear very well. I just want to add two more things, the importance of needing this information now, and the first is because it will be used in our application coming up, um, as soon as it gets released, but the second, the second reason is because last year, during COVID, we, we got such a poor response in terms of, um, quantity, that it was not reliable data. So we like to take this information every year, of course, and so we already have a gap from twenty twenty, and so we're very interested in seeing what the twenty twenty-one findings are, especially because probably the number one question I get asked in my job is, is student use of whatever substance up, down, steady, and, you know, of course, their social life has very much changed, and my answer is always, I don't know. I don't know until I get this information back and can give you a comparison versus twenty nineteen. Um, so I appreciate it, and I'll stay on if you have any other questions.
Well, you took my first question, so, so, anybody have any questions for me? The only question I have is an odd one, just because somebody actually reached out to me about getting involved, and I mentioned the community impact team, and so I don't know, if somebody wanted to start getting involved in community impact team, or, you know, even like the K C football committee, that was out of the path, how would somebody reach out, reach out to you, is there?
Yeah, great question, we actually just had somebody reaching out, so I wonder if it's the same person, and my answer is, is it a student or an adult, because we do have volunteer opportunities for both, um, students and adults. If somebody is a student and they want to become involved in youth action team, they can contact me, and I'll connect them to the youth services director, Jen Ford, who oversees that. If they want to join the coalition in general, that's what Mrs. Embriano is on, um, I have an application for that, and so they can just reach out to me, my email, my easiest email with all my last name is coalition@northreadingma.gov.
Perfect, thank you very much. Uh, so do we need a motion to approve the community, in, community impact team survey for this year?
I agree so.
Okay.
I would like to step in to assess the, uh, community impact survey for the middle school and.
Thanks, hi Diana. Roll call vote, Janine.
Hi.
Diana.
Hi.
Great.
Hi.
Hi.
Hi as well, cast aside zero, thank you very much, Amy.
Thank you, everybody, I appreciate it, and of course, we share with you first the results.
Okay. Thanks, Amy.
Thank you.
Okay, I think that's all the guests we have tonight, so we're gonna go back to the top and go to continued business. We actually have some people here tonight, I'm guessing they want to hear about the reopening, especially with some of the news coming out from the state level, so Dr. Daley, I turn it over to you for reopening update.
Are you sure that I'm going to use this episode of the national campaign?
It could be the budget, my colleague is a pretty.
Uh, so of course, I'm sure there's a lot of folks here to learn more, we're gonna just provide our updates as we, uh, Mr. Um, yeah, Mr. President, I just wanted to check if you were here, us, or was it an argument to our speaking?
Um, it, the issue was that whenever somebody that's not present in that room speaks, the speaker in that room was slightly feeding back into the microphone in their room, so it was a little, yeah, I could hear probably ninety percent of things. It's not that anyone remember, but you, you have what I'm saying right now broadcasted, and you also have a live mic, and sometimes it was, it was picking up on that a little bit, I think, from our guests.
Okay, it should, it should work pretty well, we've done this a lot with the speakerphone, so thank you, I just wanted to clarify. So, um, a few things I want to update on, obviously, um, we have been following through with our COVID nineteen testing, we have, um, successfully implemented pool testing for the past two weeks, we started last week with all of our staff that had registered. This week, we did a pilot with any student groups, we ultimately, um, all students who had enrolled were able to, um, participate this week. We weren't sure, we wanted to, to scale it up, but we were able to do all students, um, that were enrolled, had to Sunday night, there's some that have come in this week, that'll be included next week. All of our pools have been negative, we had a couple of pools that were invalid, um, with staff that learned what was wrong, someone had put a, you know, if you put the, the Q tip in upside down or something, you can invalidate the pool, and so it just, it's taught us a few lessons, and that's really why we did this, to scale up. The program has been extended through April eighteenth, which is wonderful, so we, that is covered, our plan is to continue it through that full, fully funded by D E D, um, pipeline, and. And we do not have plans to continue it after that point, and we certainly hope by that that point, many of our staff will be vaccinated. Obviously, the students will not, but, you know, our fingers are crossed with the announcement yesterday that staff will be able to be vaccinated beginning on March 11th. Some are able to get their vaccinations a little bit earlier, but that is very welcome news. We've been trying to advocate for that in many different ways, through letters to legislators and Governor Baker, the commissioner, through our superintendent association, through joint letters that I've shared with the, with the union leaders. And we feel that this prioritization, you know, the teachers were the next group, but this certainly moves them up. They are the only group, really. And it's all educators and all staff in the schools that are able to come in. And that certainly has been made very clear that this is not a prerequisite for reopening school, but it is certainly something that we think is an important step to bring everyone's safety and concerns, you know, the anxiety around safety down. And pool testing also does that. I think that assurance that you've now been tested and your, you know, your pool came back negative, and certainly many of the others in the building also in that same situation is very comforting news. If you, you know, the last time we were meeting, we were talking about just the large numbers of cases that were being reported, and was it overload? We were talking about needing to close the school. We were talking about some risk of transmission in school. So a lot has improved and changed in just a few short weeks. I'm very confident that as things move forward and it starts to get warmer and more folks are vaccinated, things are certainly heading in the right direction. The district, the town has been in the red to the yellow. It's sort of went back and forth a few times. We are heading in the right direction and continuing to have very low cases. We've had only one case this week and one case last week. And I still have one to report from this week, but that's, that's really very positive news with our numbers. So we are, you know, I'm just gonna read you through a little bit of where we are with this process. So for quite some time now, I've been speaking with the teachers' union leadership and other union leaders about the possibility of a return, what that would look like, what it could look like as these things started to fall into place. So we've been in a very good place as far as having those conversations. We feel that our model as designed is adaptable, and we really designed it that way from the outset, that if we ever had to shift to full remote, or if we ever had to shift back to full in person, the way we've designed it, the way we've set up our classes, it will not be that difficult to make those shifts. There are some major hindrances that we need to still work out, the biggest of which is lunch. So the biggest hindrance, the two were busing and lunches. So when we first talked about this a few weeks ago, we discussed, you know, and the survey that I sent out several weeks ago, if you recall, was, you know, would you be willing to come back at less than six feet? And it was overwhelmingly, it was close to 70, 30, it was 65, you know, around there percent saying no, they weren't comfortable there, especially when you factored in that people that were on the bus might not be able to take the bus. The bus has been changed, and it essentially has been lifted to allow more students on the buses. So that was the first hurdle that the guidance of the spinning hole was able to clear up. Lunch is, is still something that, it's certainly a problem that we're going to work on to solve, but what most need to understand is, in order to bring students back, we will have to be at less than six feet with them. And so in order to do that successfully, I think we can do that in the classrooms. There are some challenges, though, whenever that mask comes down. Whenever we have seen transmission in our schools, it's been in situations where someone's mask was on. In a lunch situation is where we've had the most concern. And again, it's been a very small number of transmissions out of over 100 positive cases of students in our district that have been reported. There's been three or four where there could have been some transmission in school, and that all occurred with when masks may have not been fully up. Certainly at the younger levels where that's more of a challenge, and then also at lunch. So a concern is if you're at less than six feet and anyone has a mask, that now there's a vulnerability there. So we are awaiting some guidance on that as well as we, as we make our plans and try to figure this out. I just want to share, and I will share later, some correspondence with the, with the school committee that we received. But we had the time on learning survey from the state, and the time on learning survey from the state identified districts that may not, with their current models as designed, may not be meeting the requirements. This goes back a few months. And so many districts, because of that, had to start making changes to their model. So their hybrid model or their remote model was not meeting the state requirements. And so many districts are developing plans and getting them pre-approved by school committees to change their models and to bring in more folks because they were dismissing too early, they were having too much asynchronous time. We always met, our model and our design always met, our hybrid model always met with the highest standards, and so we did not have to have those models. And so some of the districts that have already announced changes and plans to bring folks back are doing that before they've seen the guidance from the state. And hopefully that, you know, I wish that that works very well for everyone. Where we are at this point is we are collecting data from families. We're going to get an announcement tomorrow from the commissioner. He's going to present to the Board of Education. And very soon thereafter, I'm hoping tomorrow, but maybe it'll be a little bit later, we will get the official guidance of what all of that is. That said, we can read between the lines and see where this is going. And so our principals have been working very hard already behind the scenes to try and prepare our classrooms. What most likely will happen tomorrow is the commissioner will talk about elementary school first, K through five, that remote and hybrid learning is no longer acceptable for time on line. I want to be clear from the outset, there will be a provision for anyone who chooses to remain in full remote, and that most likely will be folks who have pre-existing conditions or other vulnerabilities, who have COVID or are quarantined, they will be able to access the school, and that will be, continue to be an approved method for learning at least through the end of the school year, June 30th. That's what, be clear. What may not be allowed is any other type of hybrid or remote. So there may be exceptions. Many districts are in very different places, but for elementary, there will be an expectation of returning to school in early April. And I'm not sure what that date is, and we will adjust and move from there. Now, as we know, for elementary for us, we've had kindergarten in all year for five days a week, and that's not the norm. So we've had that already. We've been working all year to try to have first grade in. We've never been able to quite get to that place because the way we were kindergarten, we had to use multiple spaces. So we were never able to replicate that for first grade. We are actually making some adjustments to kindergarten, so that we're going to consider to try to, you know, we could possibly start bringing some of our younger grades in earlier and depending on that timeline, we may, you know, our, our plan is to try to start bringing more students back as soon as it's absolutely safe. We would be comfortable saying that, you know, if the commissioner comes down and says that elementary would begin in early April, that that would most likely be our plan as well. What I believe the commissioner is going to say is that there will be some flexibility with, with middle school and high school. My recommendation at this time, and I'd love to hear more from, from the committee, I think that our model lends itself to having middle and high school back as well. So I think that we can begin to discuss what that would look like. We may phase it in. We're going to come up with a plan that works well for us for North Reading, that makes the most sense. But I think we all agree that the best place for our students to be is in-person for their learning. We will support them when they're at home. There will be some changes, possibly, to what their model looks like. We certainly, we've already had some concerns about, especially with some of the older students, we've had a separate high school forum, where, you know, were students necessarily home for the right reasons, right? So it was designed for students to be in remote, to keep our numbers down, but we've had situations where there are three or four students in the class and 17 at home, and, you know, eight or nine of those that are at home might be there because, I'll just say, maybe they, you know, they overslept and they felt it was easier to work from home that day. That's really not what the design ever was for the model. The model was, some students are in person, some students are at home, and if you're sick, stay home. So obviously, if you're sick, that's a different story. But we do need to think about whether, what that looks like moving forward, because, you know, at some point, if you're sick, you might have to miss the day. Like, we might have to go back to that kind of thinking, because we do want to make our focus on the students that are in front of us. So we do need to think out some of those things, and no matter what comes out with the commissioner, we certainly have to bargain certain aspects of this impact on, with our union to make sure that we, preliminary conversations that we've had, I think we all have a common goal, and we're going to work together on that. So that is really a concern, but it's certainly something that, that we still need to continue to work on. So I wanted to share some of the results of the survey that we have put out. Again, very different from, from the original survey, you know, things have changed, so let me just share a little bit of where we are. So some of this, we will come back to later in the evening, but this first item is about a return to full in person. And the question is about, you know, I want to be clear as well, that in the survey, we didn't give the option about remaining in hybrid. We did that on purpose because that may not be an option. It may be, you know, some may need to be in full remote, and others would need to come back in person. So with those two options, out of the responses, we had, at this, at this district, I see 1,162 responses, which, that covers a good amount of families. We have about 2,500 students, a little bit less than that, and many of them have siblings. So 1,600, I'm sorry, 1,162 is a very high response rate. And we had about 400 within about 30 seconds. So I think people were waiting for this survey to come out. But as you can see, it's about 90% of folks have indicated that they would return full in person, and they're comfortable with that. There is, you know, the one number in all of this that I'm a little concerned with, there is that, you know, 10% that has said they would switch their child to full remote. So what that means is those are students that are right now coming in a hybrid that would go into full remote. So that's, that's a fairly high number of respondents. I'm thinking that maybe with more information, those folks may be more comfortable coming in person, and if there is any option for anything in the middle, is some kind of hybrid, then maybe they would stay there. Mr. President?
One quick question on that. So was the survey sent to everybody? Because, or could this event people that are full remote right now, if we're filling that out?
This question was only sent, so this was just aggregated as by cohort. So this is A, B, and C answering this question. The second question is specifically for those with folks in cohort D out. The one place where it could be a little divergent is because I did say, if you have any students in D, there are some folks with one child in D and others in, so, but we do have on this, 66% said that they would remain in full remote, but 33% said that they might send their children back if there was a planned plane. So you would get some students back from full remote. It's about, you know, survey-wise, it's about 30 or 40 families, as opposed to 100-plus families on the other survey. So it'll be interesting, and that's one of the pieces we needed to look at. We will need to get some more actual data as we really try to figure out how to make this work. One thing that's been discussed, you know, we want to be the least disruptive we can possibly be for students. I think if students either opt into full remote that aren't in there now, or choose to remain there, at elementary, there's a possibility that their teacher may change. That's something that we've discussed, because in order to prioritize the in-person learning, we may, we want to keep those classes together, but we may have to find a slightly different solution for those that are choosing full remote. It's not ideal, but I think for the big picture, that might be the best scenario. So that's not official. That's not anything we've decided upon, but it's something we've discussed, because we really do want to prioritize the in-person learning at this time. So we will make, if that is the case, it'll be the least disruptive it can possibly be. There were some other items that we'll talk about a little bit later, but I will just share now with the school start times. We asked some questions there, as we talk about the calendar later and school start times. There was a good amount of support. You can see it's almost 90%, you know, 30% in favor of the change, and then a large percent, 63%, who are, don't, are not concerned either way. This is really about trying to take the early and late schools and keep them at the same place. I will, I will say that if you don't have a child in elementary, you're probably going to answer that it doesn't affect you either way, right? But not a lot of people that are saying to stay with the current model there. And then the real question about the start time is below. 57% saying they're in favor of a change, would like to see it continue, and 28% saying it doesn't matter either way, and then there's 13% saying that we should revert to the previous schedule, which would have had the, the elementary schools starting later than the middle high school. More to come on that. There's a lot of, you know, we're gonna talk about it in the evening, but I will just say for those that are on at this point, nothing has been decided. We're gonna do a lot more discussion and presentation in our upcoming meetings on this through our school start times committee. But we were able to, because one of the silver linings, I guess, of this COVID, we were able to do something, a sort of a pilot to see how it worked, and we've got a lot of information from that. And one of the biggest outcomes that we're hoping is to have, you know, a late, as late a start time as possible for the elementary schools. And also, if we can try to get those three schools on the same schedule, that's a real bonus for the district, and for families and for teachers. And so we're hopeful that we have a plan that can do that. We're still examining all the data, and that is really why the, the busing questions that are also on here are very important to have that information. So although it was sort of non-binding, getting that information, about 50% of the people who completed the survey gave us the busing information we need to make some of those decisions for next year, because the numbers help determine how many runs we need to make and whether we can do with the start time. But again, we don't want to build it just based on one year. We anticipate that it may fluctuate a little bit next year, as, you know, we recognize that some people are working from home, it may not be for, for the rest of their career. So we don't want to make a huge change that we think wouldn't be sustainable for multiple years. But we're fairly confident at this point that we have some creative solutions. So we'll have more to share on that later. So I'm sure there are a lot of questions about reopening, but again, just to reiterate, the Department of Ed has not given us the exact guidelines of what, which grades, which states they're thinking, whether there are solutions. So one, one great solution to lunch is, don't have lunch. Just dismiss before lunch, and in the afternoon, have some remote connection or something like that. That's like, that's still sort of a hybrid, it's a little bit different look to what we have now. That, that works better for elementary, I think, not so great for middle high school, where you probably have similar classes in the afternoons, always in remote, right? Then you could talk about, well, you start doing some kind of cascading where, you know, a different class each afternoon, and that, that gets complicated in its own way, right? But I don't, we still don't know whether the department's going to even allow something like that. So for us to develop a full plan and publish it and say, this is what's happening, I think is a little premature. So our plan here is to see what comes out tomorrow officially, see what comes out from the department. We've been, we've been told that most likely by next Wednesday, we will have a lunchtime. So I think by the middle of next week and into the end of next week, we're gonna have to make a decision. Either we're gonna develop our plan based on the DESI guidance, or we're gonna say, the DESI guidance hasn't come, we need to develop our plan, in which case we will. But either way, we're looking at bringing back elementary students, certainly early in April, first week, second week of April, middle school, high school, around that timeframe, or maybe a little later, maybe after the break. That would be my recommendation at this time.
Thank you very much. Like that in the middle. I'd love to hear from the different committee members, what they're trying to tell us. First, since you're not here, I might call on you first, to include you in the discussion, but do you have any thoughts on, any questions for Dr. Daly? Any thoughts?
Um, a couple of comments. I'll, I'd like to echo what Dr. Daly said, it's in that the, the primary goal really has to be getting as many kids back in for in-person learning as we can, while still making sure that things are safe. Hope that's a fair paraphrase, Dr. Daly, but that's, you know, that's, that's the goal of our mission of educating. I, I'm glad to see any progress going in that direction. You know, the, the concern I have is really just that, right now, it seems like there's a push and a pull, where the state is pushing us to get, to get back in person, and, and as stated, under six feet is okay, but as I understand it, the CDC is still advocating for six feet. So I can understand any parents that feel confusion about that. I, I feel a lot of confusion about myself, and I'm not sure how to resolve that. But, but nevertheless, provided that things are safe, getting, getting kids back into school is the best thing for families, and the best thing for kids, of course.
So the CDC did say up to six feet. They did change that a little bit. They did change that a little bit and they said especially if the district is in the red. Now their definition of red is a little bit different than ours. It's basically more county data. Again, it's a national assessment, but that's another reason why either gun, we're not going to jump ahead into this. We are just coming out of the red as a town. And so that's another adjustment. But CDC has not completely agreed with what's coming out locally, but part of what's going to be the Department of Education, the commission tomorrow, I believe, is going to be a letter from many, many physicians and medical experts in Massachusetts that helps to try to close some of that gap because locally that's something we've also wanted to address as well or some of the discrepancies between DESI, DPH and CDC at the national level. And so I know that that's something that they're addressing head on tomorrow with the Board of Education at this stage.
I'd like to make a minute.
Yeah, I'll chime in. A couple of quick clarifying questions, Daly. First, at the very beginning of your discussion, you mentioned a number of 65, something between 65 and 70%, and I wasn't clear what that was referring to. You said something with 70% would or wouldn't.
It was, it was the original survey, I think, of a hybrid versus what it was.
That was again, I didn't put that graphic up. That was the, when I first did a survey a few weeks ago, I guess it was a few months ago, maybe, it was, the question was, would you be comfortable with your students coming back at less than six feet? It was really what we were getting a lot of emails on both sides that I put out there to see. And it was very much divided. It was in 60s to 40s, so there was a lot of people wanting to come back and a lot of people didn't want to come back.
And so the news is that the current survey is showing a definite trend towards being willing to come back.
Definitely, definitely. As I mentioned, there was no option on that survey to status quo. And I have received enough that things are working well, why change it right now? And really what this board education piece is, it really takes it out of, in some ways, takes it out of control. If time of learning, if it is determined that hybrid is no longer counted, we can't do it. So it's got nothing to do with, really, that piece of it is not even on the table because we can't offer that program anymore. It wouldn't be available, but we wouldn't qualify for that because our, you know, our status, our counts, our building, our, all those.
And I think that's a different point. You know, we're going to follow the requirements of the department. You know, there may be some other things that are recommendations or we're going to try to hit you to certain points, but the requirements are going to follow, I'm sure. In the pool testing, you have a certain participation rates or, you know, what kind of, you know, how many people are participating, whether it's staff and the students?
I can get the exact numbers for you. It's, I think percentage wise, it's a higher number of staff. It's very high. We did have, forgive me if I mentioned this already, but we did have some confusion, so I want to make sure it's clear. You, you need to register for symptomatic testing and then you have to register again for full testing. So what I did last Friday, I emailed everyone who was officially approved for full testing and then emailed the entire district the next morning and said, if you didn't get my email last night, you're not in. So I think that shook the bushes a little bit and you got another 200 or 300. So there's, I believe, total staff and students close to 650 to 700 out of about 3,000 or so if you count all staff and all students. So, you know, it's, it's not, it's not everyone and I think for some it's, it's a question of they're focused on the vaccine now, less than the other testing. I think for some it's, they don't want to take the time or subject, you know, themselves to the testing, but it's worked very, very smoothly. So you may see as more folks do it, word about getting more folks involved. And so each week we will extend it. There will most likely, I believe, be the original, the date was March 9th that you had to sign up. I'm trying to remember that date. I, I don't know whether that's been changed now. You know, in my mind, it's changed. I don't know if there's a new date established, but I think, I do think at some point we will say no more registrations after this point. I think there's some of the data they want is to see multiple weeks and they don't want people just doing it for one or two weeks. But we will accept new folks, new entries. I'll probably send out a reminder of that and also a reminder on the survey to get some more information.
So there's really a lot of reason to hope that as we get into April, that the, between the testing and the vaccinations that are going on, and it's unclear, completely unclear how quickly educators will be able to do that. There's going to be a leak somewhere.
Correct.
And understand that the return to school, the return to full time is not contingent on the vaccinations, at least the state doesn't claim that, as does the CDC. But it feels like as soon as we get to April, we're going to be barring a complete turnaround and a much better place, a lot more information, the case counts should be way down and hopefully people will feel more comfortable about returning to full. So I think we're on the right path.
I would just say that, you know, from what I heard from the governor the other day, they're going to, as many of these vaccines come available, they're going to try to get them into the hands of those that are on the list and teachers are now on that list to make appointments. It sounds like at the end of the month, they're going to get a lot more. And at that point, it may also be one dose and I'm getting a very good feeling, the sense that we could have every teacher that wants to be vaccinated by April vacation, let's say, certainly by that point. And so hopefully by that point, those who need their second dose will get it and a lot are going to, I think, take advantage. I'm hearing more people say, I'm going to just wait for the one dose and get it one done and done. So we'll see, but that's, that's optimistic. Again, I would have loved to have it done very differently, have a very different plan and we've advocated for that. I think I failed to mention that, you know, the town as well as Mr. Brayto, the Department of Health, they've been trying to get either clinics in town through local pharmacies. We're still trying every day. Obviously we've got some different contact dates to just see if there's anything possible. If we can't figure out any way to do this locally, we will, but they have just really not supported a supply of vaccines to the local and it's really been pushed to the pharmacies, CBS and to these larger distribution areas. So that's, those are the options we have now. The governor mentioned there is infrastructure, if we get more doses to do a bigger way and we certainly will explore whatever option it is. It may be challenging, you know, I've mentioned it before that, you know, folks now are going to take whatever point they can get. We discourage them, obviously, staff from missing the day, but I can understand why. If you're nervous about this, you're going to take what you can get. And I think as a community, a school community, we're all going to pitch in and just realize that there might be days where there's a bunch of people that are, that are out getting a shot or covering each other. And I think we will certainly get through it, but it's going to be an interesting pinch over the next few weeks, but I think we'll be, you know, I think this extension of the window made me feel better, that all will be spread out more.
Thank you.
Yep.
Diana?
I just wanted to, I know you alluded to almost wanting to get some feedback regarding middle school and high school. Books like we say, elementary schools probably have some flexibility. I just wanted to get feedback that I think that's great that you're thinking of that and I hope that the district will go in because I think there's value in that. I mean, as you guys all know, I was always an advocate of, of three feet and hoping for as much in-person as possible. So I'm certainly an advocate of the plan that you, at least at this point, think you're going to be exploring. And then I was just out of curiosity, had a question and I, you know, I haven't really, I don't know what other, you know, organizations and industries are doing just yet and how this will all scale, but I don't know if you've thought about it yet, but is it going to be required that teachers get vaccinated or is it going to be optional?
Yeah, at this time, you know, there's a lot of those questions out there. I, I'm not aware that it's going to be a requirement for them to be vaccinated. Even, I don't, I'm not even sure if it's a requirement for them to tell us that they've been vaccinated, but we are going to strongly suggest full. If you are vaccinated fully, you no longer are part of the contact tracing process. You no longer need to quarantine. There are many changes because of that, and so we do want that information, but there are some legal questions about whether it can be fully required, but it certainly is strongly recommended. And the sense that I have is that.
Everyone probably will.
Everyone, everyone's on board. There will be for many different reasons, people that may not be able to or different allergies or whatnot. And so it's, you know, to my knowledge, it's not a requirement at this time. It's a great question that comes off the top.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody on the call has any comments, you want to raise your hand, we'll call on you as well if you have a question? I'll just start by saying about pool testing, I appreciate how smooth it's gone. It was confusing registering, I will point out, because it took me a little bit of time to do that, but just for people that don't remember, the benefits of it, I think, are really important because somebody might have COVID and not know about it yet and so the earlier we can do it, the fewer contacts, it's just a much more rapid response if there is somebody that's infected, which I think helps to contain it. And so I know my kids all signed up for it. They all did it very easy. It's not the really long stick. It's just a little cutesy one, so it was actually very easy. So I think if anybody is listening and hasn't signed up, I really do think there's a lot of value in it. I think I want to start by pointing out that I think our hybrid approach has been working pretty well, you know, I mean, and I think it's worth pointing that out. And I really appreciate all the teachers, like we've all heard the hard stories from other districts. Our teachers have gone out of their way to try to make this work. And so any of my comments is not saying that what's, what's happening now is not working well. It is. As Rich kind of mentioned, you know, DEFC is mandating things. You see some school committees that are sort of getting on board to try to fight DEFC and they're trying to organize, you know, ways to fight that. I don't support that. I mean, I think that if that's what the rule is, that's what the rule is, we have to abide by that. And as I kind of said, I mean, I was in favor of as much in-person learning as we could in the beginning as well. I understand there's a trade-off if some students would be less than six feet apart at some time. I don't think that necessarily means three feet, it might be five feet for some kids, maybe four and a half for some kids. It might be in certain factors, but I do think it's time to try to get back as much as we can. But I also see a big difference between elementary and high school, middle school. Because elementary, I think, is going to be the one that's mandated. High school and middle school, I think, is a model and, and I've been as reactive as anybody. I've annoyed Dr. Daly this week quite a bit, but I understand from the models that with high school and middle school, I think it's a lot easier for a kid to still be hybrid and the class not really be that much different, whereas in elementary, I think it's very different. And so even if we decided to, you know, let the high school, middle school go slow or maybe still have a hybrid approach and that keeps the numbers down a little bit because you heard Shivi say earlier, there might be some students that would rather be in hybrid still. To me, the point is trying to get the option to allow students back when they want to be back, if they want to be back. And so I think we should be moving forward towards that. But Dr. Daly pointed out, we need to know the guidelines of the plan. We need to work with the unions. We need to figure out the logistics of it because, you know, being able to be back in the class and being able to be back in the lunch are two different things. And so, you know, there's a lot to go and I know everybody wants to push the gas and get an answer tomorrow, but I do know that from conversations with Dr. Daly that there are plans being made and there's a lot of conversations going on, but I think everybody's pushing the same direction. But that's my thought. Dr. Daly?
A couple of things. So, you know, I do appreciate the, the choice and allowing students to come back. In some ways, just the logistics, we've even talked about, I mean, the physical movement. We are in the, the school tonight, so you guys are seeing some of the, the stuff, you have to sit in the cafeteria, but have to physically go back in the classroom to follow that. To phase some of that in is just cumbersome and to, because depending on who chooses to come back, you might need 26 in one room and 15 in another. You know, it's logistically much easier to do a band-aid and say, we're back, deaths are out of the camp, deaths are back here, you know, so even quite honestly, like we talked about, are we hiring up that help to help with this one big movement for the one, one weekend or something? So there's a lot of things to consider. Something about middle high school that I did mention as well, you know, we talk about senior events and all those things and just having some of those, all those things that we talk so much about, that were much more the front part as you get into late April, May, June with those upperclassmen about having that time together in a class, to do some of those things and to have those opportunities I support. When we talk about, certainly don't want this to be the driver, but we talk about MCAT testing, which is going to happen, to be able to do MCAT testing with all the sophomores on one day as opposed to doing a cohort A MCAT testing, cohort B MCAT. I mean, you're, you're now creating half as many disruptions for testing as you would otherwise. So not that that's the driver, but it's certainly a logistical thing that we're thinking about with secondary. And then the last part is just, you know, I think we understand, you know, how important it is to have our, our secondary folks back as well as our elementary. We're going to work with our teachers to make sure that it's done in a careful and thoughtful way, but we certainly want to have, you know, I, I think that our model will work with bringing all those grades back, but we will listen to what comes up tomorrow and we will think about, is there, you know, what's the best way to do it with us here in North Reading?
I just wanted to, Diana, I just wanted to add just one thing to consider as well is that like the sixth grade transition here in North Reading is the most difficult transition that we have in our district. And I know just from personal experience that that grade is troubling. And so even to get them back for a few months, you know, that's why I'm an advocate for sure at the middle school, but I do agree with kind of all the things that are going to happen for seniors and in the high school. I just think there's a lot of supporting elements to consider there. There's just one kind of raised up point.
In my mind, if we can do it this spring, if you have the kids that head start in the fall, I think it's just, if we can do that. And I think, you know, what I've heard from some, from teachers is, you know, we all know it's going to happen at some point. It's a matter of figuring out when and how to do this. So we can do this safely and you give folks a head start. And there's going to be all sorts of conversation. I mean, we, kids are coming three days a week, most of the students, so it's not that big a difference, but it will be different to now see all of your class at once. I mean, there are some differences there and there are going to be some students who have some questions, some gaps, some trauma, some things that need to be addressed. The sooner we can do all of that, the better. And anything that's going to, anything that we do now is going to pay dividends in the fall when we come back, hopefully, in the fall as well.
I a hundred percent agree with that and to work it up that way, elementary school and that's it. But then you have to balance that a little bit with the, the lack of under, maybe better understood than I just haven't read about it, but of, of the different risk levels between, and it's always frustrating when, I'm confused to read this letter that you gave us, Dr. Daly, from the, from these physicians. If they, if they give us any information that it's, you know, the difference between elementary kids and high school kids, such a huge difference in age and, and potential is such a huge just difference in risk of catching this disease or transmitting it. And so that's the only thing in my mind that I worry about, balancing, getting the correct balance right. But I think moving to graders is a great point. It'd be great to get those back for a couple of months.
I think one, one obvious difference and, and something that I didn't mention, just the, the numbers and the votes, right? So it's not just having all the kids in, you're having a hundred percent of the kids in the hallways, in, on the stairwells. And so are high school kids going to be more shoulder to shoulder just because they're a lot bigger? Yeah. It's harder to spread out. So that's something we need to think about as we're in additional months. And also how do we, you know, maybe we're staggering some dismissals and entrance times and pass times so that there's just, we don't want to go from what's working. And that's, that's what, quite honestly, with this data, we have seen low transmission, but we've seen low transmission with six feet of distance and a lot of physical space happening at all times. So I think what we need to just be careful of, and I, I appreciate these doctors that have said we've seen low transmission and we've always said you can do three feet and there's some schools that have done three feet, but to my knowledge, there's not a lot that have been operating at that level all year. I think many districts that are, that are operating are at closer to six and I've seen those surveys as well. So it's worked well with those precautions in place. I think, I think things have changed and I think that's the biggest peak. I think, I think the rates are down, the transmissions are down, the more that we go outside for classes again. I think with all that on the horizon, you know, part of the solution could be some outside time, it could be, you know, certain reasons, reaching with barbeque classes, our today classes, I mean, getting going outside for walks even in this class, but I think once it's warm, we're back on the track, we're back on the field. All those things will open up and I think, you know, we're certainly feeling a light at the end of the summer a little bit. Very optimistic and excited about it.
Yeah, and it's clear the community, just the overall community transmission rates have a big impact on schools. They certainly, they're down, that makes a big difference.
And the only thing I would say is that I think, I think what's coming out right now I mean, and the only thing I would say is that, I think, I think what's coming out right now is there's a lot of political, a lot of it's becoming political, it's becoming, we're being ordered to do it by the commissioner or this or that. But our objective in this room and in this district is to focus on the kids and what's in the best interest of the students. I think we've all said the entire time that in-person learning is the preferred way of learning. And so we would rather have in-person if we can, that's what we're trying to get back to. We do have a, a hand up, so Alexis, if you want to unmute. Alexis, are you here? Hands down now.
Lower the hand.
Lower the hand. Please. Yeah, you can also chat if you have a question, you want to take that or something.
I would just say, my, my suggestion to you, I would, we would give at least a week's notice if there was a change in the schedule. You know, it would be, um, you know, preferable or more, but we may, we may name it in, we may try to one grade then some others. So we give folks notice. But again, we would not see it being all that disruptive, um, because it's going three days to five. You know, it's not, it's not like we're going from remote to full in-person, right? They are asking their, raising their.
Yeah, Alexis, can you unmute?
Yeah, can you hear us now?
Yes, you can.
Great, so this is her husband, Ernesto, how are you? So.
Good, how are you?
Good, I have a couple of questions, if that's okay. So the first one, I guess, just academically, from a student body perspective, you know, if we think about 2019 and where we are today, I'm gonna not think about 2020 per se. But how are the kids in comparison with, if we were to compare their third grader of 2019 to a third grader today, would they be at the same level if we were comparing a month schedule for the month of March, right? And my gut tells me they're probably not. And is there any thoughts or concerns or plans on how to potentially catch up, if you will?
Yeah, so academically, I'll answer that first. You know, we, we prepare for some learning gaps and some social emotional gaps. I will say that our hybrid model, which is what we said, has been working as well as it could possibly be. And we, we've conducted standardized assessments, we've conducted, um, you know, check-ins with teachers. We are not seeing drastic, you know, we're not hearing from teachers that, you know, by this point in the year, by March, the third graders are usually at, at this point, and this year, they're, they're, we're not hearing that at all from our teachers, um, you know, our, from our AP teachers to our third graders to our first graders. I know what you're saying, it's exactly the same. I think there is a little bit of a gap, but there's nothing that's very, very concerning for our teachers. And so we frequently check in with our, with our staff about this. Um, and we're not seeing those huge academic issues. We do think that whatever gaps are there will, will be made up, and we certainly will be, you know, addressing that as needed in the spring and into next year. I think the social emotional piece, I think you're seeing more. I think you're seeing more of the students that aren't connecting in the same way than I kind of see with my own children at home, that they're not seeing their peers and their friends as much. Um, you know, my, my children are hanging out with their younger siblings more than, than their, than their friends. And you're just seeing some differences. Um, I think that will start to improve as they come back to school and hopefully as they get to perform, uh, you know, concerts and, and sports and all that as well. And we are not, as a district, that concerned about the gaps. We certainly are aware of them, we certainly are working them, but I'm not saying they don't exist, but they, uh, we're not as, honestly, we're not as worried about that as we thought we may be because of this scenario.
And the, the one thing that I will add in before we go to the next question is, if you stay around and try to keep it a stay in this meeting longer, but when you look at the budget we're, we're facing, you know, we're trying to propose a budget later today, and you'll see a direct link between some of that. A lot of what we're trying to close are to impacting like social emotional learning. There's, again, re, you know, increased reading specialist. There's, there's a lot of things that we need to this district, and so the budget relates to that. And it all comes together, like at, at the last meeting, we were going through school improvement plan, and we were looking through that, and we saw that, you know, there are, you know, there was a gap in reading. And I know that from the budget, part of that is addressed in that. And so it all kind of comes together. When, when we do see something, we do try to specifically address that issue. And you'll see if you stay around for the budget, it's specifically called out, the position that we think we need in this district to address those issues.
That's, I'll, I'll just also say that, you know, if you want, for, um, some students for whom this is not working, there's, uh, more, more needs than everyone. We're certainly prepared for that as well. I, I know that remote, hybrid, what, whatnot is not working very well for everyone. And for those students, there are certainly, so I, I, I'm speaking, when I'm speaking about the, the successes, that's really for the, for the total plan, but those that are need are a lot of need. And, and very often, those students are maybe not the same students that have needs when we're in front of them. Some students have adjusted differently to, to being in remote. Um, and I just want to say that our teachers are really to thank for that. Our model allows, and our teachers embrace, uh, for the most part, a lot of connections and live synchronous teaching and opening their classroom stuff. And not everyone did that, not everyone did all the time, but I think most have done that, and, and I think as the year went on, more to them. And I think that embracing that philosophy allowed us to teach very much what we all used to talk just in a slightly different way, as opposed to, you know, having students do packets or things at home. And I referred to that earlier about us not having to have, not having to adjust our time on learning. It's because of the way we approach hybrid, and that's not, that's really not the way it was everywhere. And it's in large part due to what our teachers were able to embrace.
Okay. Uh, yeah, my second question, it should be pretty straightforward, but as I kind of think about potentially the kids going back, you know, next month or two, if you will, and things somewhat feel normal, and we go through the summer, and, uh, we come back the fall, it sounds like there's a lot of thought that's being put into academically what the fall is going to look like. Um, but as I fast forward a little bit forward into the winter, you know, as we think about just simple continuity plan, how are we thinking about preparing parents potentially if we had to go into some type of a hybrid mode if there were a spike? I think just, um, you know, I'm thinking from a communications perspective, is that something that parents need to think about? Um, where you, you know, parents have on the plan, right? As we think about the fall and everything else, how, is, how, you know, you know, the committee and everyone else thinking about that, just not only internally, but from externally, a parent, a, a parent perspective as well? Is that something that's being thought about, spoken about? Does that make sense?
It, it does. I, I will say from where I stand, and for the meetings I made with superintendent, for the commissioner, if, if you want to say where I was last May versus now, last May, we were talking about the upcoming school year and having to be prepared for everything. Those, we're not hearing that now. I think there's a high, you know, the vaccine is proving to be very effective, not only against the current strains, but all the other strains. The real move now is to get everyone vaccinated, and I think there will be some concerns going into next year. But I'm, I'm not hearing at this point when we need to be planning and bracing for the, or possibly having to go to remote at some point next year or to hybrid. And that said, um, I think none of the factors are just coming, and now that we've been through it, I think we have a blueprint that if, if it's not, if we start to get, um, any indication that, that something else, whether it's COVID again, or COVID, you know, whatever the next, uh, COVID 21 is, right? Hopefully, that does not happen for another hundred years. But if it does, I think we're well prepared to do that, and we would give as much notice as, as possible to do any kind of preparation.
All right, great. And the last one should be pretty easy. Um, you know, as we're thinking about next month, and we're going into April, you know, spring break, is, uh, I'm assuming, in, you know, you're thinking about continuing to have April vacation? Or is there any thoughts of potentially if the school were to open to kind of, you know, cancel April vacation, I guess? Just throwing it out there.
Yeah, at this time, we're not thinking about that. I know last year, we, we, we played with the calendar a lot more in the spring because there was a lot of uncertainty to kind of power through, to get our days in. Uh, we're in a much more clear place. This, this year, we followed our calendar, we followed our, um, you know, our, our breaks, and we followed our green bowl schedules at high school. I mean, our days and everything look very much like a typical year. So I don't see that need. The way we built our calendar this year with the breaks that we have taken, um, is, is allowing us to, to be out by mid-June. So we're not up against the end of the year. Um, and so I think that break in April is one that, uh, will give us a sign to make some adjustments. And I, I don't see any adjustments to that this year.
Yeah, the only thing I'll add is I think, I think a lot of teachers need a break. I mean, there's, there's a lot going on, and in these changes that we made, I think when the plans are being made, the break will be incorporated into the plan. You know, whether it's a physical time to move things, but nobody here, or, you know, you try something out. But I don't know, I just think that we probably need that vacation, so I wouldn't support changing it either.
Okay. Well, I thank you all for your hard work and, um, everything that you guys are doing for us, for our kids and, um, and parents, and continue on doing a great job. Thank you.
Thank you, and great questions. Thank you.
Okay. I think we're done with the first item on our agenda. Um, some requests and some comments, and we're going to move on. The next thing is the school calendar. Dr. Daly, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. So at, at this time, uh, we certainly, as you know, we had many draft calendars last year, um, even before. We had to, to face all of the cases this year. Um, what I'm hoping to do tonight is to just get, uh, comments and feedback on this draft, and then discuss and maybe be able to publicize and share out a potential starting date. I think that's what people really are looking for for next year, so starting in April of the year. At this time, there is also no indication of any kind of a change to the number of required days for next year. If you recall, this year, we only had 170 days or so. Uh, all indications are that we are back with, with those same number of days for next year. So we discussed last year about looking at when Labor Day fell and making some changes. It was clear that the committee supported, um, students beginning, uh, prior, I'm sorry, half of Labor Day. Uh, there was some discussion about the possibility of teachers coming back early. So this, this calendar, um, and other things to just point out at the end of the year, there's a, there's a holiday that is due, uh, this year. This year, it falls on a, on a, on a Saturday, it's celebrated on a Saturday. Next year, the holiday falls on a Sunday, and that's June 19th. Um, it's called the 19th as the holiday, and so now that will be celebrated on June 20th. So that then is a, is a day that, that we take as a holiday, we now be open. And that would push our ending to, to the 27th, with five snow days. And so one of our considerations, in addition to just, I think, the overall value of having some time with teachers before the students come back to address, um, the learning gaps, the social emotional needs of students that are going to be coming back to school in the fall, to possibly have the teacher, um, professional development day on the 6th. So they, the suggestion here would be that our teachers would come back for professional development before the school, uh, begins. The 7th would be our welcome back day with all of our staff. Students' birthday would be on the 8th. We would be returning to several professional development days. Um, one thing that we're trying to do is streamline a little bit. We had through, this year, we changed our elementary conferences from three afternoons, or three days, to, um, this calendar would continue that. We would still have the three relief days, but one of them now would be professional development. So for the number of afternoons when the students are not at school, that would be released, uh, that would be decreased by two. So we'd still have the same PD days, but we'd have two less, um, conference days. And so this, this calendar proposes, um, that as well. We would have a second full professional development day on election day. And the reason why we continue on election day is that is a day that many districts have to take because there's schools used for voting, and that allows us to do multi-district, um, professional development. So we would want to preserve that date as well. So with those two days in the calendar and with the new holiday, it does bring our last day with five snow days to the 27th. Um, and it preserves the vacation days and some other days as well. Christmas, uh, winter break, Christmas is on the 25th, obviously, Christmas too on the 24th. Um, but the 23rd of December, um, this calendar does list it as, um, a professional development half-day, but that, that is actually not being recommended. So I, I guess this draft is a little bit off of that, I'm sorry. We need that changed.
So the 23rd is a full day?
23rd right now would be a full day, and, um, the half-day should be, um, the first. So I, I think, I think that might be a little bit different. And this, this one that gets scanned in the pack is the first half, and unfortunately, should have had a different one. It's just that's quite a change. But the overall, I just wanted to have a discussion tonight, and then maybe we can at least prove the first, uh, prove the first day, um, for students. We can then, you know, I still have comments out from the, you know, we consulted with our, our teachers union and others for some feedback. So we're in an early stage. Um, and, and we're a little bit later with this than we have been in the past. Part of that is because I wanted to see where we were, what it looked like. Uh, but I can tell the feedback of the first day would be a full three.
I have two questions, nobody has, I've missed the questions, sir. So my only two questions are, number one, would there be any thought to having both professional development days on the 1st and the 2nd of September? And then the first day for the students being on the 7th of September, or is that, that something that's of interest?
So as I mentioned, the reason, I mean, I, I would welcome that. Um, the, the, the bigger reason is really that, that election day allows us for a lot of professional development, and it's something that we, we, I, I know the start date, September 1st, it's September 2nd. So.
So having a PD day on the 1st, and then the, the, the greeting day, the, the 7th on the 2nd.
I see. So I keep in the PD today. The, the discussion that we had last year that I recall was that people that are traveling on Labor Day weekend are playing not on Monday and they're being in school the next day, if I recall. So, so that, we could certainly present that. It does, contractually, it does present some challenges because there are certain contracts that if you start before Labor Day, there, there's compensation that's for Labor Day. And so that did happen this year, and we had to, uh, either pay those, uh, that day's work or come up with a comp day. So we could do that again and come up with an arrangement. Uh, but I think the larger reason why we put that in there was what I, I saw or heard last year was that, um, the committee felt that if you're on Labor Day weekend on Monday, the idea is that that's the day and you're not going to school the next morning. And because that's what we've always done when we started after Labor Day, was you start on the Wednesday. The students and the Tuesday was now. But I'm, I'm willing to consider that if, if the committee feels otherwise.
I, I mean, I, I don't have a start for it either way. I mean, I had to, we start on the 6th. If, if the students start on the Tuesday or the Wednesday, I don't, I'm just looking at, I don't think there will be, hopefully, there won't be five snow days. But, you know, June 27th is a very late ending day.
Yep.
And so that would just move it up to June 24th being the last day.
I'd love to get it surrounded, yes.
And I'm just wondering if, if, if that was the worst case scenario, that, you know, you're getting out somewhere between the 20th and the 24th, I think would be nicer. And so the only way that I'm thinking about doing that is if the first could kind of, one of the professional development days, students wouldn't be back till that Tuesday.
Yep.
But that was just my one thought. And then the only, only other question was, for snow days, I assume right now the guidance is it's going to be traditional snow day next year? That hybrid days won't work, or?
Right.
Know that yet or not?
Everything we've been told is that that was a one-year off. I don't know what will be preserved from that moving forward. Um, so that's, that's certainly one of those things that we can discuss. First of all, is allowed, and then what can you do locally? But again, similar to the, the other scenario, infrastructure didn't play. You know, we got COVID, every teacher has a master's degree now in, in digital learning and teaching, and, and we couldn't do that easily. I, I, I think those days have been effective on, you know, I think having a traditional snow day has its place, but I think there's other days when we absolutely could be safer and be home and then not be here until late June. I know we're going to be happy about the decisions, I hope, um, at the end of this year. Hopefully, we're. Hopefully, we're out of the woods with the snow, we'll see. But it is quite, you know, we're gonna be able to get out, you know, a day earlier because of our most... Diana?
I was just gonna make a comment first today that I think the calendar looks good. You know, I'm always an advocate of starting after Labor Day in this, to pick that, and I think that's all common of those two, but I think it looks good as is. I was gonna, this is just on my mind because my son is so good at saying, "Mom, there's no half-days in March this year." So I noticed there was one in this calendar. Did things shift around in terms of timing of Professional Development? Because I'm pretty sure, like, this year, there's something in the March timeframe, and I'm just curious if there was any reason for that, and I'm sure it's something of significance, I'm curious. And then my only other, you know, and this is probably leading into our school start times, but I did see some magical start times start listed down there in the bottom. So that were looking pretty good. So I was just curious if that was some of the thinking, or if there's just placeholders for the start dates?
So, so good questions there. A good part of the 15s, I believe, I should have came up with them. We, we, we looked at that calendar this year with March. And quite honestly, I think a lot of us thought we might be a four vote at this point, and we would revisit that calendar. Otherwise, we said, wow, this is a... We actually talked about, we have a PD day at the end of the year this year. We had this discussion, do I come forward here and move that to March and get out a day later? We ultimately decided we're just gonna power through with March. That was the calendar. There were some PD days in the calendar, half-days. So we moved, it was one September. We did some shifts this year, but we ultimately just said, let's just keep moving through, and we'll get out a little bit earlier with the students in June. So we returned, I think, when it's all said and done this year, we got the S and T day, and those, so we had some of those things to build this year. But I think ultimately, we probably had less Professional Development Days this year than typically due. And so we resumed that for next year. Again, December 23rd one is in here, so I don't know if there's another one missing. But the next draft, I'll very clear. But we typically, in the last couple years, have had five half-days and two full-days, and that's what we would be returning.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep. And then, was there another question?
Just the start date, I know you'll get to it.
So, yeah, so I, you know, my thinking there was, I wanted to get...
Do you understand what they are for people too?
Sure. And I'm sorry, I thought this was, I need to shed. The, what's on this draft right now is just showing that the high schools begin at 8:30, which is according to the science, and that's what we're doing this year, according to the science that's out there, that high schools are recommended not to start any earlier than 8:30. So would be a power, but landing on what most schools and what our schools traditionally done.
And the days are a little bit longer, because this year, the days were shortened, plus the...
Sure. The calendar's good, the times are gonna look different. The time run learning requirement of 170 days was shortened, as was the hours are required. So that's a little bit different this year. So this is in here as a placeholder. So we took what we did this year, didn't change it completely back to the way it used to be, and we built in the longer days just to show what it could look like. And then if ultimately, we decide that we're not gonna continue with the start times, we will change that. But this is not official, and that's why I don't want the whole day approved tonight, because there's other people. Middle school would be 9 o'clock to 3:26. Similar to what we're doing this year, obviously, just a little bit later because the full hours are restored. Under this model, we are hoping to start the three schools at 8 o'clock. As I mentioned before, those Professional Development half-days, when I tried to bring the batch, put little, all the third grade teachers together to discuss across the district, we have multiple different dismissal times. So instead of getting a solid two-hour block, you're getting less of that because of all the travel and the different times. That's just one benefit to getting everyone on the same schedule. The other, every two years right now, we switch with the intermission of the week's school, and everyone's schedules are kind of changed. This is something that could certainly be affected that way. We were hoping, throughout us, there's Michael and Sean Colleen and I, especially Michael, has really spent a tremendous amount of time on this, looking at the bus, the bus contract, the bus numbers, to determine that this could work. So we're not 100% there yet, but we, we're confident enough to put it there and to put it out as a possibility. Even we have some adjustments to the pre-K times, the full-day kindergarten and the kindergarten times to follow, to follow that schedule. Obviously, the dismissal times will be a little bit different. But Senator McGowan has chaired the whole man act force as well. He wants to, you know, part of what we wanna make sure with the earlier start time is that students are now waiting for a bus before it's late. You know, we really wanna be mindful of that. And I was thrilled to see 8 o'clock. I mean, this year, when we did the batch, when we got it to 7:45 as opposed to 7:30, you know, which was the old high school start time, I was much happier. The fact that we're getting that much closer to 8 is fantastic. You know, might end up being, you know, 7:55 to, you know, we might be playing a few minutes here or there. We're gonna try not to, but we do have to time those bus rounds to make sure that they work. So, but right now, we went with sort of the clean round numbers, and I'd love some feedback on that.
In terms of the, sorry, just a minute, I have to follow this one. In terms of the bus cost, I believe the bus is all based on how many buses you have.
Yes.
Even if you only do three runs instead of four runs, it doesn't change the cost at all, does it?
It does. We've talked a lo, I'm sorry.
It doesn't.
Yeah. The, what we're discussing is what that looks like, if you take multiple runs or if you have more students on the bus. And we've got some preliminary feedback from our science committee about that, some elementary parents who've shared. And then we would share that along with the committee. But I think at this moment, we're leaning towards maybe having some more runs.
Yeah.
And then...
The one that loses is the cost now. We can do more runs, that doesn't cost it anyway.
Right. If you need to have less students on the bus, and the students on the bus for a shorter time, what we would then need to do is anticipate a cost of those students who aren't on the bus, what are they doing, right? They might have some activities at the school that's monitored by someone or in the side, so there's a cost to it. But I think right now, that's what we won't be thinking, but there's also the possibility of maybe we structure the runs differently with more students on them, and they take along their run. But either way, our goal is to get them back to the next school on time, so we're trying to sort that out. So we, we're gonna do everything we can to make that happen. The drive-to-ship drive is a lot of that. That's why I was part of the survey, the 24th, the survey we were looking at, and that was from 2019, explaining this year. It was gonna be maybe an average of two. But the survey itself was helpful, and was trying to comment that there's very good response very quickly, so that's helpful. But certainly, you know, I think it's certainly feasible, there's challenges to it, but it's feasible. We do, based on the contract, have access to head office by now for the day. So, but we do, you know, three runs, you know, four runs, the two TS, three TS, you know, multi-runs, double shuttle, you have the access and all. And we're looking at all of them.
And in terms of, we said you wanted feedback, I love it. I love if all three can be at the same time. I like the way the times are right now. I think that, you know, middle school being the latest, I think, makes the most sense. Although, my only question would be on, like, JV. Because if you have JV sports, they usually go before the varsity sports. And so they would be, not only worry about that, would be if JV's the first game and they're the last one to dismiss if the schedule would work out, but...
Pegos?
Yeah.
Yeah, JV would be Pegos.
Yeah.
Or that, or JV still has...
JV still, I don't know.
It's great, okay.
I will, I mean, I guess we should just talk about start times then, but we've discussed both sides at the same time. The Shiraj points are good. I think those are some good points. One thing I will point out about the sports is that a lot of school new reports make this change. As more schools make the change, some of the coaches have said, you know, some coaches have said, they have concerns. Other coaches have said, we're sometimes waiting at the field for another school to be there anyway, because they are on their start time. We are gonna see this continue. One of the biggest concerns, I mean, there's always gonna be people that are inconvenienced on either end, that it doesn't work for their schedule, that's always gonna happen. But I think the biggest concern is, will this work? What are the implications? How's it gonna work? I think by doing it this year, through everything else being up, you know, interrupt people, and by piloting it, we never have an opportunity to pilot something like this in a traditional year, right? So we're able to do that, I think people seen that it's working, we've seen some of the benefits. And I think the biggest question usually is with elementary sports, how's it gonna work? And I think some of the feedback I've received in the, in the open comments on this have been that the elementary students have done well, but please try to keep it as close to eight. But that's what, we don't want them super early, but a lot of the kids are off and they're ready to go to school. You know, and that might affect some people that needed, we've certainly seen an impact of before-school programs. We may need more after-school programs, or, you know, so we may see some shit there, but there's, there's still some of those needs though. Chris, is that...
Uh, no, not much of it. I mean, other than, other than, you know, obviously, I've been supporting this idea that it's been for a long time. There are no silver linings really for last year, but just be, clearly, we can take something from that and make that fix.
Yep. Before we do it, though, the only other thing I was just gonna add in here, and this is a weird thing, but I was gonna start earlier with this. Companies have reached out about not knowing when school committee meetings are. I just thought it would be worthwhile just to stay with the next meeting is while people are still on it. And so the next school committee meeting is on March 22nd at 6:30 PM. And the main attraction then will be the middle school presentation.
On the main district website, there's a calendar. Everyone can download it, the meetings are there, the links to the meetings are there. Under the School Committee tab, there's a document that lists all the meeting dates with hyperlink to the meeting and recordings of the meeting. So I did set that out, and as a big fan, I'll do that again as well to make sure people see it, because it's in several places, as well as on the town side, for the most...
I think we just gotta go back to four, three Mondays and Thursdays, the last time they say slash, and so...
They do in advance, but I, when we approve, at the end of our meeting tonight, we will approve like the next three. So I've always approved three out, so three weeks, more than three weeks, three meetings in advance can step in and...
Okay. So no more comments on the school calendar. Do you want a motion to approve the second as it, or do you wanna think about the first as well, to move it up now? I'm just worried about the 27th being the last potential day of June. I don't, I don't care either way, I mean...
So I'm just gonna, I, that's the same, you talk about, what we mentioned, talked about last year.
Yeah.
I mean, I think the bigger concern is when we talked about possibly moving before Labor Day.
Yeah.
And I think you're, I think we're all in agreement that that's kind of a non-starter.
Yeah.
For students.
For students, coming back before Labor. I think the Tuesday after Labor Day is a little bit more negotiable if we feel like it's really important to get that extra day. That's my feeling. I mean, I'm not managing that schedule anymore, so I don't know how you guys feel, but how you feel like, what you feel. I feel like it's more negotiable.
To me, I think it's about the educators, what they want, if they want the one or two days, if they want the orientation after Labor Day, so they have an extra day before they come back, or if they'd rather do the two days and be able to be out a day earlier. I would leave it up to them, but...
Whatever they do is, is the preference is, there, I believe that each educator, actually, would be comfortable coming back prior to Labor Day. Again, contractually, they're not coming back before the first of September. But if the schedule looks like that, they'd be open to that in order to get out early in June. That is what they... I think it was said, and it may have been, you know, not the committee, but I remember something last year, if you're, if it's Monday, and you're up in New Hampshire, and you're doing a barbecue, the thinking of starting after Labor Day is, you're not getting up, driving home, getting up the next morning. So I just wanna, I'd rather just cut that now than change. So, but if the idea then is, so I get to the car, driving home for school on Tuesday, that's different. So what does starting after Labor Day mean to you? I guess that's sort of the question.
I, Richard's correct. Like, I've always been, the strongest point was to start the kids after Labor Day. That's always what I was talking on. But, you know, and I certainly can leave her either way, but I do think that Labor Day is a holiday of traditions, and I feel like a lot of people do go to somewhere in New England or something similar. And I think it would be fine to come back on Tuesday and have some plans for that. I don't think that's the end of the world, but I think, you know, there are gonna be some families that wish they didn't have to rush home and, and kind of leave their Labor Day in the middle of it. So, and then the other thing that I keep in the back of my mind is, yes, I know it's not set in stone, but there is still that possibility that we can have some remote snow days. So is that mitigating the impact at the end of the year of those five snow days? I mean, think about this year, we're, what, we had one snow day. So I kind of think about it from that perspective and think maybe they could use some flexibility there too, to allow for that. But I'm not 100% adverse to moving it to Tuesday. I'm, the more important piece to me was starting after Labor Day.
Did I address all the, sorry. Did I address all the concerns financially about doing it before? Or do you think that, because we could possibly do some kind of compensation, right? You know, I think, yeah, I appreciate it. It's not, it's not a huge of a challenge.
We see you, because actually, Janine gave you, but she yelled at me, so Chris?
I'd just like to agree with, with Rich and Diana, particularly with what Diana just said. I, I think that it's a nice tradition to leave one of those camps and start camps early every day, people depend on it. But I agree that when it seems appropriate, starting the day right after Labor Day could be, could be the right thing to do.
And I guess the other question is, would you make it changeable depending? I mean, this is the second worst calendar, right? Last year was the worst calendar, coming, coming at the very latest possible day. And so that's the, that's the year that you might wanna do it. This is the year you might wanna do it, maybe next year and the year after. It doesn't matter until it flips back. So I guess that's the other point, do you wanna move it back in form, do you wanna set it?
Yeah, I think it is, I, I, I would say we can have that flexibility that when, when Labor Day is earlier, maybe we do start on the Wednesday. You know, but for this year, we're gonna try to get out future. Yeah, and I would think if people, as much example, if we're saying the 7th is the first day for students, then we let people know, let's go out there. You know, they plan, maybe they plan some Monday, Tuesday, or Monday, and they know that now. So that's kind of why I wanna get it out there.
Once again, the educators would be okay with it, or you would have to...
I would, again, I haven't shared that with them, so I would want to, maybe we...
Can you hold on it?
Out of five, only the 27th. I think, I think everyone's, but you still can't go on a state right now, so...
Yeah.
I think people's plan, I think people are learning to be a little more flexible. So that is why, you know, I didn't wanna get all this approved, and who knows where we are. So I'm more than fine just having the discussion tonight and bringing it back on the 22nd.
We're gonna have to throw the things anyways, because it's not quite correct, but I think we have to do it.
No. It certainly would just be the start date is what I've been looking at for tonight.
I'll leave families to know it's probably gonna be the 7th or 8th at this point.
It's after, it's after Labor Day for students.
After Labor Day for students.
And it'll be, and for the educators, again, we're open to whichever they prefer. Do they wanna get out a little bit earlier? And hey, and I agree, it's probably not gonna be the 27th anyway, but I feel like once you get to mid-June, you just wanna be done, so...
Can't wait for the 7th one to arrive.
And then the 15th, there's plenty of people who are still on the, on the meeting night. I don't see a big backlash, so that's gonna be worth something.
I'm just looking at Mrs. Cal, so not, she's not giving me a thumbs down yet, so...
We'll just, we'll just have a discussion tonight, and we'll wait it back on the 27th.
That's great, perfect. Okay, so no, no vote on this one. School start times, we've gotta get into already, but...
Yeah, I'll just give a very quick overview. You know, there's some items here, here, that we have, you know, again, a great group of folks that have been meeting proactively on this for several years. Mr. Green, since we've been doing teacher learning, is sort of leading this group, and I've been a part of it. Mr. Connor's been a part of it. Mr. McGowan, and several parents and folk peers who's a teacher as well as a parent has been a part of it. So the timeline that we're operating with, as you can see, we are looking to have an initial school calendar discussion tonight. We're hoping to have more detail around the bus thing. You know, we are, as we've discussed, this is a good year for this. You know, the bus contract is up, the contracts, you know, teachers' contract is in negotiation, so there is obviously impact to start times that we would need to discuss with all of our groups to make sure that the impact is understood, and then to discuss what the implications would be. But I have had some preliminary discussions, and the preliminary feedback has been that there was support of the start time change. So I have done a survey, staffed with some of those same questions that went into the community. I will be doing that, as I mentioned, with students and also with staff. But we would wanna start some of those impact discussions too. We are trying to schedule some type of parent... We are trying to schedule some type of parent community presentation about the benefits. I think folks are certainly more aware of it than, than, than in the past, but, um, Judy Novens is an example of someone who's, uh, an expert in this area that we're trying to coordinate with, with a parent night. If, uh, we're not able to get something scheduled live, we may host something ourselves and show and share. There's just so much out there from other communities, um, and, and just, you know, a few minutes of watching those videos and understanding the benefits, uh, will really go a long way for anyone that, that has questions, uh, about that. But we've been proactive in sharing that over the last couple of years, so I think the, the community is educated about it, but I think there's still some additional steps to take. We would like on around, this is one of those split dates, whether it's the 12th or the 15th that we're gonna figure out for our next meeting, but at that meeting, um, the committee would like to present to the, to the school committee that the start times are good, um, with some of its findings and suggestions for next year. And around that same night, then we would have a final vote on the calendar with the times fully adopted. Has, does that seem like a reasonable timeline?
Yes.
So we can still, that was the start date next week, but then obviously the little right-hand corners that have, would, would need to be solidified through this process.
My, my only two quick comments on this one, number one, for the people coming to present, I think you already have it yet, but don't oversell, because you already have it yet, and then I think most people are, are here in support of it. And then the other question is just about attendance. Have you seen any changes with attendance? I mean, do you see more high school kids that are on time now because it's later? Do you see any issue at the elementary with kids being late, or have you seen any shifts in that? Because I, I mean, I, I just know from talking to Mrs. Inbriano that her kids are always late, you know? I'm just wondering if you, if, if there's been any, any attendance change. And then again, I know COVID year feels a little bit odd, but.
It's a little bit, yeah. It's a, it's a great question. I, I think we don't have, um, anything more than sort of anecdotal, but you know, Dr. Raffo, especially at the middle school, has just expressed time and again to me, the benefits that she's seeing. And teachers are saying to the principal and to myself directly, kids are more awake, you know, alert in those first period classes. And we're hearing that over and over at the secondary level and we're not hearing at the other level. Other than, I think the bachelor, the, the early, early school, we have heard some pushback, uh, from that just being certainly inconvenient, maybe a little bit of, of a challenge for some of the kids getting up and getting ready. Um, but Doc, I've, I've honestly heard so much more positives about this, you know, from the students and from the staff. And, uh, I think what, uh, Shiva shared as well is, is, um, there are some concerns that students have, but there's certainly, um, positives for our way, the negatives won't be experienced. And that's really what you're hearing from other districts that have known us as well. So very, very similar. But I just, but I don't have the actual attendance, uh, but that's something we can look into a little bit.
Good. Any other thoughts on start time? Okay, the time we've all been waiting for. Mr. Connor, ladies. Most important meeting, so I'm gonna move this to your little quiet time, Michael. I don't have that problem, so I'm just gonna move to Michael a little bit closer to you.
Is everyone seeing Mike? I'm sorry. Yeah, I'm getting a problem behind it. Sorry about that, unmuted myself when I shared. Okay, um, so we can't see the screen. Do you want me to share my mic or? Oh, sorry, I'm trying to do that. Okay, so, um, essentially we're gonna try to walk through the preliminary FY22 budget, um, and typically do it at this time of year. So at this point, the committee's kind of received their, their FY22 preliminary budget book. Um, so this, the, really the purpose of tonight is kind of walk through the, the highlights and to go over kind of the numbers, get into some discussion, but this is really the beginning of the FY22 budget development deliberation process. Um, so we're gonna have to cover these main agenda items, we're gonna talk about some of the budget challenges that we are facing, um, this year. We're gonna talk about the main budget drivers, um, that are driving the FY22 budget. We're gonna go over the budget priorities by both the administration and school committee and, and get into the numbers at that point, break down kind of where, where the funds are being allocated. We're gonna talk about some of the new initiatives, the staffing decisions and, uh, driven by our strategic plan, as well as new initiatives in, in part related to the COVID-19 pandemic. We'll talk a little bit about our revenue offset and our budget subsidies and talk about things that are outside of the, um, general fund request that the town supports the appropriation, but certainly everything that sort of works in tangent to create the, the overall experience, um, for the North Reading students. And then just in conclusion, sort of what, what is sort of the budget represents and what will happen, some holy comments. Um, so we get to the challenges, uh, so certainly when you look at any kind of school municipal budget, um, there's always this sort of this tangent at that play where you're sort of beginning with a structural deficit right, right from the outset, and that's kind of the biggest, the biggest challenge when you look at the macro level of, of a, a school budget. Um, certainly items like we refer to as fixed costs, and that is health insurance, general liability insurance, retirement costs, other benefit costs like workers' compensation, life insurance, Medicare. All those annual increases certainly tend to escalate at a far greater rate than the annual revenue that's coming in to, to fund the appropriation of the budget from year to year. So if you look at that first bar graph to the right, the top bar graph, you can see that over the last seven or eight years or so, this couldn't certainly just dynamic that play. Our fixed costs are a whole, the biggest amount of that is health insurance and other benefits and other areas that kind of come off the top before the revenue gets allocated between the school and the municipal budget. Those fixed cost increases are really growing at a far greater level than the revenue, which is made up of certainly, you know, state aid is a part of that, local property taxes, local receipts, like tax side taxes, licenses, permits, certain fees. We all know property taxes are capped at two and a half percent, so there's certainly a limit to some of the revenue when we start this process and that revenue grows at a lower percent. So you start, you start out the process with this structural deficit, and that's always from a macro level, a pretty big challenge. The school department has revolving accounts, has other special revenue accounts that we, um, certainly all use to make up and to fund our entire request. So those, there's also, there's a limit to that type of revenue that we can bring in on an annual basis. So our, our federal and state grants tend to be relatively flat. Most of those grants have been entitlement grants. We have new grant opportunities, which we'll talk about because of the COVID-19 pandemic, it's a relief grant that we're looking at, um, that we had this year and that we're looking at some available program grants for next year related to COVID-19. But some of those revolving accounts, the, the, the years of fees and the tuition we charge for some of the optional programs are fairly limited or been fairly flat. So that, that's a, a challenge that we work with every year. And then our contractual obligation, certainly, um, I think it's, it's, when you look at a school department's budget, it's always, uh, salaries make up the largest piece of the pie and, and that's the case this year. Our salaries make up eighty-three point seven percent of our total budget request, and that's a pretty typical statistic when funding a, a school department budget. So these kind of contractual salary obligations from year to year to, to, to fund, uh, really relatively modest, you know, cost of living adjustments or immediate contractual obligations with, with our, our staff, our existing staff is, is always, um, you know, makes up a, a big part, piece of that, of that annual required increase in a year. And then certainly we've talked about the COVID-19 pandemic, um, and the impact on the educational process this year and some of the challenges as we look towards not only this spring and we look to reopen and go back to a, you know, full in-person model and we, we look to it next year in the fall. There's still many variables and unanswered questions. Hopefully we'll get answers really soon and, and be able to trial some things this spring. But we do know the potential of a lot of new costs that could arise. There's still a level of uncertainty. Certainly the impact on some of our special revenue programs, the things that we charge fees for, athletics, extracurricular, busing, some of the optional, uh, tuition day programs for full day kindergarten and half and full day preschool. There's still some level of uncertainty there of, of what would the participation be at and what could that impact, um, in terms of the revenue? And, and that does have, as you'll see later in the later presentation, an impact on our, our general fund request as well. Um, when we look at our revenue sources, um, just really quickly, just again, no surprise here, that a community like North Reading, the biggest piece of the pie group, the revenue coming in is from local property taxes, making up over seventy-three percent. Um, our state aid, which is chapter 70 and unrestricted local government aid, makes up the next largest piece of the pie. Again, North Reading is very, you know, generally very flat state aid, it doesn't change very much, at twelve point six percent. Some of the overseas on the town side that I spoke of earlier, again, very, generally very flat, is about seven point three percent. And then these are revolving accounts, which is the, the federal and state grants and some of the, the fees that we do collect by busing, athletics, extracurricular and the main ones. Um, we do charge rental, um, income as well to rent school space, which is again, they impact by COVID-19 virus, um, make up the next piece of the pie. So that's just from a larger picture, certainly the, the revenue breakdown that's coming in to fund the school department budget. When we look at our, our, our budget drivers, our main budget drivers for fiscal year 22, uh, there's really four main budget driver at play. And the first is our contractual salary obligation, I spoke of that earlier. You know, personnel services, the salaries make up eighty-three point seven percent of our, um, FY22 level service budget request. Again, includes the costs, so sometimes step, step advancements, lane movement, contractual increases for staff. So when we look to, to kind of fund what we know are those annual increases, you know, already a kind of a big, a big piece of the pie, we need about three, three percent to, uh, uh, of an annual increase over fiscal year 21 to fund some of those known contractual salary increases. Um, when we look at our operational fixed costs, uh, these are fixed costs, um, to continue to maintain our, our buildings, our four school campuses, um, you know, various contractual lines like HVAC, uh, equipment, plumbing repairs, boiler repairs, grounds, and sand taping, maintaining the wastewater treatment facility, our regular bus transportation contracts, um, certainly, you know, rates get adjusted every year. And things like our utility expenses, electricity, gas, water, certainly, you know, phone services, all those things tend to go up every year. And to adjust the budget for some of these operational known increases is certainly a, a, always a big driver of, of every school department budget. Um, then when we look to this third item here, right, we refer to NRPS 2025. That is our strategic plan, um, the new initiatives that we're trying to improve the overall educational, um, process in, in North Reading, as well as the stuffings that we needed to make this year as a result of COVID-19 and that we see carrying forward in, into next year. So, um, there were areas that we certainly focused on this year and that new, new positions that we brought in, uh, in the current fiscal year. For example, a school nurse, um, custodians to help with, uh, cleaning and touch point cleaning, certainly technology technicians to support the one-to-one program, which we had to really, um, increase and, and ramp up due to, to grade 12. So those have been instrumental. We don't see the need that those positions go away, as, as we'll find out a little bit later on in the presentation. And then certainly other needs that we spoke of a little bit earlier to address the social emotional needs of students, to provide some academic intervention, support, additional tutoring needs, as well as some, some reading specials and other needs renewed as well that, that is a part of our strategic plan. Um, special education costs, both in district and out of district, is always, um, a big part of, uh, the, the conversation when developing a, a school department budget. The special education costs typically make up about twenty-two to twenty-three percent of your total budget request, and that is the case as we look towards fiscal year 22. Um, so we actually are anticipating, at least on our, the out of district costs of special education to go, to go down next year. We are anticipating a decline in the number of students that would be educated outside the district, as well as we do anticipate that the state circuit breaker program, which is a program that does work to reimburse, um, the district for, you know, certain special education expenses like our district tuitions and transportation costs that qualify, um, we do anticipate that we'll have more reimbursement funded available next year. So those things are certainly at play. So those are the four major budget drivers. When you get into the numbers, um, I think you can really see when you look at our fiscal 22 total requests and how it compares to fiscal 21, I believe you can kind of look at these, these changes and increases and really see the, um, four budget drivers I just spoke about at play. So we are looking at a, a fiscal year 22 budget request, um, which we're considering this to be a modified local services budget, um, of thirty-four million, three hundred and fifty-two thousand, one hundred and seventeen dollars. That is a little over one point seven million dollar increase over fiscal year 2021, or a five point four percent increase. These are the, these five major expense categories, you can kind of see the, the changes when you compare fiscal 22 to fiscal 21. Salaries around five point six percent, which can be contributed to, as I said, as I spoke to earlier, a portion of that certainly our fixed salary obligation for, to meet, you know, collective bargaining and contractual obligations with our existing staff. And then a portion of that is either a continuation of positions added this year, um, school nursing, custodian, custodial staff technician, and then additional staff driven by our strategic plan and to really address the needs that we foresee next year, um, to have, uh, really the largest impact on, on students' educational experience. Instructional expenses around twenty-two point three percent in this request. I think the most largest factor in that increase is the result of the need to really increase our technology line items. Uh, we had to certainly increase our devices, increase our, increase our instructional software, um, in some ways to address this hybrid model and remote learning. We don't really see a lot of those needs going away. We still think the instructional software that has been put in, that's become part of our curriculum, or there's a renewal cost to it, we have to kind of continue those services. Support of our one-to-one environment is gonna cost some money from a network standpoint and from an infrastructure standpoint, as well as from a device standpoint. And many of the technology devices we add into the classroom, um, you know, networking equipment, um, document cameras and so forth, we, we see a need for. Um, so that's driving, that's really driving a lot of that instructional spend increase. The operations and maintenance, kind of a modest increase there, again, that's to adjust the, the known increases to our, our building, agents' contracts, grounds contracts, wastewater treatment plant is certainly a part, a part of that, as well as our utilities. Plantation, uh, this is actually the area that, based on the, the most latest information and some of the decisions that we made at the last meeting, I do anticipate when we move through this process, we'll be, there'll be an area of savings here. So right now we're looking at about nine point six percent increase over last year. I think we'll see some savings because we have favorable results of the bid, so this is a big year, as you know, and, um, I think we'll be able to reduce the supply item as we go through this process, because the regular transportation contract brings, came in pretty favorable, and we went out to bid this year. Um, from a, out of district tuition standpoint, as I said earlier, we are right now anticipating a decline in that in, um, the number of students being educated outside of the district, which I think is in part driving this reduction in this line expense category. The other piece is the circuit breaker piece, uh, which is the amount of additional revenue we have through the state program as an offset. The other piece is the circuit breaker piece, which is the amount of additional revenue we have through the state program as an offset. Again, I think the biggest area of sort of volatility of what is kind of the variable, this is always an area that can change very quickly. So as we move through the process, we'll be looking at the latest information and this is a situation, our people item that could change very quickly. I just wanted to, I think everyone kind of, well, where that could be the case, but just wanted to, again, remind everyone of that. So then we look at some of these couple of these pie charts, kind of where are the funds being allocated, how are the funds being spent? I mentioned earlier salaries and compensation make up eighty-three point seven percent. That statistic has really not moved in the last ten years. It's very, very common statistic. You look at any kind of school budget across the state, across the Commonwealth, you're going to see that that number be about eighty-three percent. So then when you look at what the remaining breakdown from the expense category is, and really if you look at the additional sixty-eight point three percent or so costs that are made up of expenses that I would consider are mostly fixed. And that's our contractual services line, our cost of our utilities, the cost of transportation, the cost of out of district tuition, you know, these all add up to, you know, over thirteen percent. So when you add salaries and some of those known contractual fixed costs in those areas, we're really looking at a very small percentage of the pie, three, three and a half percent remaining that I would consider as more discretionary spending. And that's certainly classroom materials, supplies, textbooks, technology, professional development expenses. Certainly, you know, areas we're looking to move towards driven all by our strategic plan. So certainly we're kind of on the thirty-four plus million dollar budget. But when you look at some of that beyond the fixed cost expense, we're really looking at a small piece of that pie, about nine hundred thousand to a million that we're really, it's almost discretionary, it's about that three percent or so. I think this chart does certainly indicate that. Another way of just looking at the pie and where the funds are being allocated, certainly instructional services, the largest piece of the pie. And that's certainly a good thing, the cost of our classroom teachers, the cost of our classroom textbooks, materials, technology, everything being spent to educate the students directly in the classroom, our specialist costs, directly classroom teachers, student support, personnel, paraprofessionals, certainly has the largest piece of that pie, that's how it should be. Only three point three percent is what we call administrative or district leadership. So cost for business operations, human resource operations, administrative oversight. The three point three percent is less than the state average, which is generally about four percent. So we do have a good job kind of controlling those administrative costs. So nine point eight percent, again, fixed operational, building, utilities, maintenance, ground, snow removal, custodial janitorial services, and then four point seven percent in that out of district tuition cost number. So this is kind of, this sort of gives you an indication of how the funds are being allocated. So now we get into some of the priority positions, staffing positions. And we are, the administration is representing to the committee for consideration as we look to fund FY twenty-two budget. The first table here is what we would consider positions, again, I spoke of these earlier, so we'll go through this pretty quickly. Staffing positions we added this year that were really to directly address new needs as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic that we think we're going to need next year, beginning, I think COVID certainly changed a lot. And these are three point five STE positions that are going to be really, have become a lot of just our everyday operation of what we do. And they're really focused in three main areas, continuing to support the health and safety of students, staff, the school community. Having this Florida school nurse has been instrumental this year. And we certainly know that that's going to be very much needed next year as we look to the future. We added the custodial staff to help cover the additional, you know, lunch periods that were going on amongst the three elementary schools, the middle school and the high school if that was needed. It's the touch point cleaning, additional sanitation, disinfectants that needed. We don't see that entirely going away. I know the science is changing every day, it could look different, but certainly this position we feel is very much important. It needs to be kind of that continued services next year. We really can't say enough of how important these data technicians have been, either two thirty-hour a week positions to one point five full-time equivalent workers. They have been instrumental in the operation this year in terms of troubleshooting issues. Technology has just been, as everyone knows, so important to, one little thing goes down, it has a huge disruption to the educational process in the classroom. And these technicians are instrumental in supporting the one-to-one environment, getting into the classroom, troubleshooting any type of issues very quickly, making sure that working networking equipment, working smart boards, working technology to kind of minimize any of that interruption. So that is really instrumental and certainly going to be needed next year. I talked a little bit about our offsets and our federal and state grants. I mentioned that we have some additional offsets in the federal grant level because of COVID-19. So we have a lot of COVID-19 money this year because that we got very quickly, that we spent the majority of that. When we look to next year, we know right now that we have something called S R two federal money of about two hundred and ten thousand dollars that is going to be available really through fiscal year twenty twenty-three. So that fiscal, all of next fiscal year, school year, and then the next school year beyond that. So we're trying to be a little strategic in how we spend that funding. Certainly, the, the way that funding has to be spent is certainly related to the COVID-19 virus. So these are the positions that were added and to continue our efforts to provide a health and safe environment and to improve technology to address the COVID-19 pandemic. So we had planned in this initial draft of the budget to spend half of that money next year and offsetting these positions added because of the pandemic. And then we have access to spend about half of that money next year. To try to avoid that funding cliff scenario that we all speak of, we get an influx of one-time money. Those who are around two thousand and ten, two thousand and eleven, you know, as we had that last economic recession area, there was a lot of that one-time money being funded and districts were trying to avoid that scenario. So this, this approach would allow us to kind of just, you know, not potentially have to shift two hundred and ten plus thousand dollars back into the general fund in one year. And then we look at our new positions driven by a strategic plan. I think it's certainly the focus on the social emotional needs of students. We've talked about that earlier, Dr. David did a great job speaking to that and there's a great question by by parents earlier about where children's needs are. North Reading is not alone, that this is certainly going to be the biggest need and the biggest focus as we look towards next year and is a result of where children are from our social connection standpoint as a result of having some of those, you know, those lack of student connection because of the COVID-19 virus. So we feel these two school adjustment counselors, one for grade five and one for grade six through twelve, is really a pressing need for student support. Apparently there's only one full-time school adjustment counselor serving six hundred and sixty students at the high school. These counselors, if funded, would be instrumental in addressing the student mental health and bonus needs of all students, grade through twelve. The role of the school adjustment counselor is extremely impactful, one of the elementary and secondary school level. It will certainly, this will allow not only for responsive services, but it's key in development programs that are proactive rather than reactive. These positions would be essential in addressing, again, the small social emotional needs of all students, which certainly, as we all know, has been heightened due to the impact of the COVID-19 pandemic. So certainly those are the highest of priorities. And then this educational data specialist position would really support all administrators and teachers and using data to make more informed decisions. The position would serve as a coach and would assist classroom teachers and administrators on the use of data from various databases as well as various local data collection tools to help better analyze that data and then just make better decisions. Would also work in classrooms, you work with groups of teachers and analyze grade level, comment assessment. They would guide teams and administrators in compiling, if you're on student behavior, on attendance, on performance, to really connect that data to the educational process to help just better train and inform educators throughout the process. So a very important position. All three of these positions have been part of our strategic plan for a number of years. And I think it's fair to say that they've certainly been prioritized to the top of their list as we address certainly the impact of COVID-19. Not shown on here, just because we don't have a full-time equivalency attached to it. But we certainly allocate funds for additional academic intervention tutors at the elementary level. So we actually have remote learning specialists, remote learning aids currently working in the district that we added as a result of COVID-19 to help facilitate that remote learning process that work, come to work in in the schools each day, but they help facilitate that, the hybrid model. We may actually reallocate that to sort of academic intervention tutors specifically at the elementary level to help, help that in those gaps that Dr. David spoke of early, try to address those things quickly on in the process and provide that additional academic support. There's additional increases to the visiting staff, reading specialists, also kind of built into the budget request as well to help certain schools in certain areas identify those students in need of additional support as quickly as we can.
Yes, this, Michael, sorry, I'll keep most of my comments today, but just one quick comment on what you just said. With the, you said we have these positions for a number of years on the wish list. But the data specialist was actually a position that wasn't funded in the past, and that was a cut over previous years, am I correct?
So correct, we kind of re-titled the position, so we did have a sort of a, I think it was a data facilitator position, certainly a little bit more involved in sort of state reporting and meeting our state report requirements. So this is shifting that, making it a little bit more kind of educational, a little bit more data analysis there, a little bit more coaching of classroom teaching. But the funding was there and it's just kind of shifting that, this position to what the need is. Very, very good question though. So then we got a few more slides behind me quickly. So this really in summary, this is what the ask is, thirty-four million, three hundred, three fifty-two, one one seven. Again, a little bit over one point seven million dollar increase. That's from the general fund, the appropriation. But as I spoke of earlier, the budget is made up of a lot more than that to make, you certainly have federal state grants, we have those revolving accounts, those look to fund an additional three point two million dollars. So we really look at the whole picture of what's being funded to really add a little over thirty-seven point six million dollars to the, certainly other, as everyone that attends and is tuned into our monthly meetings, you're well aware that we accept a variety of school committee donations averaging about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars on an annual basis. That's from our PTOs and our support groups, but also from private donors. We have to be, a month or so ago, we accepted a forty thousand dollar gift from the International Church in town. And so we accept these donations and that certainly helps provide the educational experience and improve and enhance that as well. And then our PTO and PTA, they're in-kind gifts in their annual budgets to fund enrichment programs, to fund class field trips, to fund technology replacements and a variety of things that the PTOs do on an annual average of seventy-five thousand dollars. All of these going into work and make the, you know, the full, the full piece of the pie of what funding is going into the North Reading educational process. So again, just another way of looking at it between salaries and expenses and what the offsets are. Again, we're at thirty-four million, three fifty-two, one one seven. Just a little snapshot for folks that are just trying to understand how all the funding kind of fits in. You have the total funding request that I mentioned earlier, that are really up to like thirty-eight million dollars. The general fund, which is the amount we go to town meeting for and ask for the town contribution, local contribution to support. This evening, we're getting that five fifty, a little over thirty-four point three million. So that's the local contribution taxes, local receipts, and then state, chapter seventy-eight, all help support that piece of the pie. And then our special revenue, as I mentioned, federal grant, state grant, our revolving funds, funds that we charge user fees for, and then our special revenue fund, like our gift donation. You can see some of the allocation of things. So that just reference on the previous slide. Here, this is a little snapshot, this is coming from the state radar, data collecting tool that are out there and available on the DEEPD website. FY twenty available, wasn't quite ready to be published yet. But just to kind of show you again, the majority of our revenue that you just saw in the previous slide is made up of our general fund requests. Federal straight grants make up a smaller piece of that pie. Might be a little bit bigger in fiscal twenty-one because we have some of that, that S R, that emergency relief funding available. Revolving accounts on tuitions we charge, user fees we charge, rental revenue we take in, it's a little bit of a larger piece of pie. And then when you look at our chapter seventy-eight, which is the black line, which is what the educational process, state aid that we take in from, from the state chapter seventy program, really relatively flat. So not a lot of movement, it's been about seven million dollars. We're in a situation in North Reading where we don't, we're not going to see significant increases in state aid. So we can't really rely on our, that chapter seventy-eight to, to cover new initiatives and so forth. So that's been a relatively flat, very minor increases from year to year. And then the state obviously issues a required debt school spending amount, a amount that they're required to spend. That's that white line, so we spend more than that. And I'll just say, North Reading is really very much like every other community. The majority of communities spend about twenty-five to thirty percent more than what they're required to spend. And that certainly is the case in North Reading as well. This next chart just kind of shows you, again, some of these programs that we take in revenue from. Certainly bus transportation from a regular transportation process, athletics, extracurricular, performing arts, kindergarten, preschool. So this is what the user fee contributions, so parents often might just wonder, you know, I don't pay user fee, I'm paying tuition. What, what is this line going to, what is it being used for? And it's really, legally, we have to be used for that direct cost that the program is supporting. So we take, this is what we kind of annually have taken in from the various optional programs that we try to use the tuition for. One area that highlighted is the kindergarten program. So within this budget request is a proposal that would permanently reduce the full day kindergarten tuition amount from four thousand two hundred and fifty, which it was last year, I know it's adjusted this year over writing reasons, down to three thousand five hundred dollars. And that would, the registration fee, everything, will be a total full day kindergarten switching to three thousand five hundred. So that would be a part of the reduction in that offset that we've had previously. But again, the administration fully supports that, and we talked about it in the committee. It's been a longstanding goal, part of the school committee, a budget goal to try to reduce user fees and tuition costs over time. North Reading unfortunately is on the higher list when you look at what our full day kindergarten cost for tuition is. I think we're up in the top three or four at the state. And unfortunately, we're in a situation where we make a change, we'll get that influx of state aid income like some of the neighboring communities that have been able to kind of move towards more of a free full day kindergarten model in previous years. So we would like to work towards that. And this would be our first step in doing that, because we would see that and we would, we hope to to have some kind of a phasing approach where we would work towards having a free full day kindergarten in North Reading. It's certainly actually unfeasible to do this all in one year because it would cost about over five hundred and fifty thousand to do that. But, you know, we think a phasing approach makes sense and this would be our first effort to take good strides in doing that. And this would be, as we all know, this is what they're being charged this year. So it's not really actually changing, it's just keeping that constant, but not going back to the previous tuition from previous years.
I can add quickly, does that mean that the, that previously the percentage of contribution was around sixty percent?
Yes, it does. So ideally, yeah, perfect world, these will all be about fifty percent. And, you know, some of them will be a lot, some of them will be a little bit higher. You know, some of the costs to run certain programs like the busing, for instance, the busing, the marketing and busing, as we know, the rates really have increased over the last three or four years. So we haven't changed that user fee in a number of years, so that's kind of gotten off, off that ratio. But yeah, that would be fair to say, some of the athletic costs have just been going up, the needs in that program year to year. So we have, again, we had to make major changes to that user fee. So we, at one point, we were close to fifty fifty and we kind of um that's been reducing uh each year. But again, we don't want, we don't really don't want to increase user fees um and tuition costs to families. Um, that's not a goal of ours, and and we're just, we're trying to make everything work, and this is certainly a big, big piece that allows us to offer these programs and offer the education, the fine arts, performing arts, the athletics, student clubs. Um, but we're in a situation where I would get the charging region to do that. Um, really quickly, so our request this year, that's five point four percent. You can see what we've actually officially been funded, which is the green bar graph, um, the yellow represents our proposal, so obviously we have to go through the process in order to fully with the town. So the last, the ten-year average is about three and a half percent, so we're we're about two percent higher than that this year, because there's certainly a lot of needs that have arisen um that we feel like we can navigate strongly for some additional funding for next year. But this, as we all know, it's going to be work to do, to do, so I just expect that being said this evening. Um, so this is a talk of one, I'm going to have two more slides. Um, this is, I think I talk a lot about these each year, but we work very hard to avoid um and reduce and and stay in any areas that we can. So from an expense budget standpoint, we try to purchase from the most, you know, state bid list, get the biggest educational discount for supply materials um that is available out there. We certainly work hard to control our our utility costs, um. We we are part of purchasing consortiums, we regulate our, modulate our boilers and our occupancy schedules, we move to LED lighting uh throughout the district this year, um and we're paying that down over a course of the the next five years, but that's all going to control those those utility costs. Uh, we're part of two uh collaboratives for special education that helps us control some of our other district commission and transportation costs, we have our shared transportation model for students that need to be transported outside the district through schools, that helps us share the cost of transportation with those fourteen other membered communities. So we've always been trying to design and customize the programming to to always meet the needs of students and when appropriate, educate students uh within the district. Uh, food service program, uh, the food service program, as we all know, was performing very, very well. This has certainly been a disruption and and um I think it responded really well to, under the circumstance, and we had a weekly um, you know, testimonials coming in from parents about how busy they are with the food service program this year, particularly the grab and go program. So we continue to pursue all available funding options, um, grants, federal reimbursements that were available this year, we all, I hope every um student is eligible for a free lunch this year, so certainly as a preface, we entered an actual snack program this year, so we're really kind of maximizing our federal reimbursement um and we're trying to manage those costs the best we can this year. Um, certainly hopeful, I think we'll be trying to move on to a situation as we, as we work towards next year. Uh, maintenance operations, just trying to limit the the need for outside contract work, you know, where appropriate in these areas. We've done a pretty good job at at controlling that and doing that uh this year, you know, to do more of that. And then just really cost vigilance of everything that we do from from our daily operations, certainly e-rate funding, federal program that helps us offset um into that cost and technology costs, we pursued all options there, and then I mentioned earlier, LED lighting, we continue to look at solar, I'll be updated a little later in the meeting, and there's solar stand. So what does that, what do we get from the FY twenty-two budget? The budget that meets all of our contractual obligations with employees and employee unions. It allows us to meet increases in fixed operational costs for our contract and services. Um, it maintains the CAD staff to continue to provide educational sound student teach ratios, especially at the elementary level. We maintain those um ideal class size guidelines. Um, we enhance operational instructional technology needs of the district, certainly I and technicians, maintain the adequate health and safety services for all students, staff and community, and the addition of school nurses is essential. They'll all have to do that, addressing social, emotional, mental health needs of all students, certainly the addition of the school adjustment counselors at the elementary secondary level, and addressing the operational needs of all five schools, the addition of that for students was essential there. And then from an expense standpoint, continuation of that district one-to-one program, in grade K through twelve, we saw that increase in instructional services, that was mainly technology-driven. Um, there's other increases to address needs from the sanitation and health standpoint. Um, we don't see all of that going away, we think we're still going to be sanitizing, but potentially still be needing PBE and so forth, so that so those lines were adjusted. And then certainly lines were adjusted to continue that preventive maintenance approach to maintaining our five schools and surrounding campuses. So really go from here, um, we're going to discuss the ongoing discussion with the finance planning team. There's additional opportunities for the community and for parents to get involved and get get uh become aware of what is being uh funded and what is being requested. A budget webinar is on March twenty-sixth. We'll continue to have much, uh, we'll do our school committee budget workshop, a public hearing will either be April twelfth or April fifteenth, but we'll both at the end of tonight. Um, school committee is due to vote on or about May sixth, and town meeting is on June fifth. So with that being said, we've talked a little bit long, I've opened, but I'll open it up any, any questions for discussion.
Thank you very much, Michael. Thanks for your presentation as always, a lot of work both in the, and the um, four of the school committee members, I know there's one question that was typed in, and this is asked to do though, asking, would the elementary and secondary school adjustment council positions be floating amongst the schools?
Is that the idea?
Yes. Well, it just, what if I were now, would there be one at high school and one at middle school, or that would, they're all closed? Then, and how many are at the elementary right now?
There's none, there's none at the elementary.
The elementary would float among the schools, and I believe the second one would be six twelve. You'd still have one at the high school, which is working with a program a lot, and then you'd have someone to help out both middle and high school.
Thank you, now I have lots of notes and questions, but I want to open up the mic. Maybe that's fair. Have a question.
Just very thorough.
Thank you. Diana?
I have the luxury of being in the budgets of cities, I feel like I've I've heard some of this before, and I'm going to hold the majority of my questions for the workshop, but thank you.
Rich, yeah? Rich, anything?
Oh, uh, Michael, as usual, we didn't talk so much.
I I I have a few things just to kind of point out here, um. Number one, I just wanted to point out to everybody that despite the out-of-district placements, I mean, while while it's important to educate our kids however they need, I just think a few years ago, the committee has really put a lot of effort into getting a position at the school that really, really helpful look at this, and I think just since the opponent has been around, it all has a role as for our student services, and you know, we've seen it's still going to be the lowest number of out-of-district placements, you know, not kind of like in, you know, in the last ten or twelve years that are on the uh that are listed here. Which, again, I mean, you saw a a budget stake in from that, and so that's important to note that there's been a lot of effort made, trying to educate our students with as much as possible. Just to point out, one thing that I want to emphasize here, if you look at budget requests, like I tried to point out, that one of the positions we're asking for is just getting a position back that we had already. All we're asking for for the, you know, the very basic recommended one are things that are literally critical to COVID. You know, cleaning if you're, you know, then the ones that are just like our 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 reach goals, our our social emotional learning that is, again, related to COVID. Now there, we didn't even put up the the real request budget, which is what, fourteen point two provisions, about a million dollars of extra provision. None of this is advancing where we're at. This is literally just strapping water, and it's still a five percent increase, five point four percent increase, and so I just think it's really important, like, at times, we try to say we're going to do this and move this way and that way, we're strapping water with this budget right now. We're literally just trying to address the needs that we seek from COVID, and it, I mean, it's kind of sad that we can't do anything more than that, but you know, that's what we're at, but I just think it's important to to point out that that's all we're really doing within this budget, is increasing, it is just directly related to COVID-related, uh, but.
I believe it's about two hundred and seven dollars for this level service.
Yeah. Correct. Do you, one question for Michael, the LED saving. I know with the LED project that was done, we're basically paying for it, for a number of years from the saving.
Correct.
Essentially.
Yep.
At what fiscal year will we start seeing the savings of it?
So it's a five-year payback, so we technically didn't see that until fiscal year twenty-sixth, so we're still a ways away. The hope is um that the estimated savings is that would still be greater, so we would exceed what some of the preliminary, some of the estimates were, what the monthly savings would be. Um, we haven't seen that this year, we've seen significant things that was somewhat in line with what we had predicted, uh, locally based this. But I also think what's impacting that is that we haven't been opening these buildings, the operational hours haven't been typically what they have, what they, what they normally are in a normal year. If we don't have, we don't have groups in here on weekend, and we don't have, you know, groups here from nine-thirty, ten o'clock at night, like you would in, you know, pre-COVID in a normal year, which was kind of what that statement was based on when we ran some of those numbers. So in fact, begin to go back to more of a a normal situation, I think we'll experience more, I mean, we'll spend a little more, I think we'll experience more savings too.
And so the school adjustment council suggests that the ratio is, right now, we have one or six hundred, they did enough. What is the, what is the recommended ratio of, you know, adjustment council, you know? I I do not, like, what I, not I heard a few years ago, like, one to two hundred.
So I I don't know, there's a common guideline, example, I think that's, that's sort of like one to two hundred, one to three hundred ratio from, like, the American Guide Association said, so. I think I've seen this with adjustment.
I I we can look into a different position, but
I will say that it functions much in the same way though in special education. You know, the the number of students that we're able to keep in district through programs that we have with adjustment counselors and through counselors, um, it 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 may not be a student that I need here five or four, but it may be a student with other um needs. That these counselors being in our buildings and working directly with kids will pay dividends over time and certainly be a huge benefit to our students.
And I, and I, a couple more things, I know, I know full-day kindergarten is a topic, um. I I I appreciate that we're making an effort here, um, and I hope we can keep this in there where we're getting on, we're losing, by by only producing a seven hundred and fifty dollars. We lose almost seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in revenue, hundred and forty-five, whatever that has to be made up. And so it's just, and and as you said, going the right way would be another about five hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and I like that we're trying to make an effort for it and hope that we can get there. The one-to-one, the the one-to-one, if that's, uh, to keep the one-to-one by the, by the computer, is that being funded in this budget, or is that like really something from the C I T C?
So at at the moment, it, it, we do have funds in this budget to to fund that. Um, we don't, the C I T C process is still working through that, so we don't really know where it's going to stand, because we I think we'll know more as we get to a public hearing. Um, you know, where where the C I T C is in that process, to see if any adjustments would be would be necessary in that, in that area.
Yeah, I'll just say again that, you know, the C I T C process has been great, and it's been helping us fund our our original model, which was starting in seventh grade to twelfth grade. Because of COVID, every kid caved in twelve, and every teacher caved in twelve, and has been using devices now every day. And we're not going to go backwards from that again, we talked about possible silver linings here, but we've we've expanded what kids are able to do in the classroom, every teacher now is using full classroom, and there's so many advantages to that for kids. Um, so really, some of what we're talking about here is those devices that they're using now are five to six years old, with the younger children, and as we know, you know, the bold school thinking was you, you give the high school kids the devices, and then they trickle down. You can't do that, where everybody's, they close up to their software and video chats and all those things, so um, we really need to support many more grades, we, you know, we do think over time that we'll, we'll, you know, those devices are lasting and they're they're working, but we certainly need to uh to refresh this model, so that's where you see.
And and my my last thought was just that, I mean, it's only part of our budget time, because we want to do so much more, and we see that the state aid is just not there to support us. You know, we need, we need more state aid to do it fully, but I appreciate everything that the town does, because the town has been forward-thinking, the P S A has really helped with the keeping insurance costs in line, and you know, finance planning team, if Rich and I are members of right now, it's been very supportive, and so, you know, I do, I do think that even with a bad situation, I mean, it's sad that we're actually getting better funding this year because of COVID, and we've gotten in years past, and it's sad that we can't adequately fund the schools, but there's not a pandemic happening. Now, we don't still fund, we have a stock, and not weekend, I don't know, but thank you very much, Michael. As I said, hopefully, I'll be here as always. More, it's not anybody, but it was one of the people that were here. Okay, that one there should be a little quicker, first one is facilities master plan committee. You don't need to talk over this one, do you? You want to go to the private eleven?
Uh, sure, you can have that.
So I do, right now, Diana was on the facilities master plan committee, so I know that they were, their work was paused for a number of months, it was supposed to be a one-year thing, but it's now going to go over to the next year. Diana hadn't actually pulled papers to run yet, and we weren't sure if she was planning or not, and so I know Abby, uh, Rover, who is the chair of our that committee, had said that the work, there's going to be work being done before the elections, the meetings are happening, and it's going to kind of go over after the election, and so she just wanted to make sure that whoever was appointed, whoever was going to do that, would be on for that. And so we put this on as a discussion point. Now we go running, that's a great thing to get here, and hopefully, you'll be still learning, but um. But the the the, the question, I guess, is, this will continue in the next year, and so most of the work will be done later on, but the, I'll look, some of the preliminary stuff will be done now. So I just think we should talk about who wants to do this, I think it sort of winds up with kind of like C I T C stuff, it's like, it's discussing with the, with the town. I don't think a lot has to do with the school, it's just looking at the master plan. I know Rich is already doing one thing with the town, but I think this is just a talk about who wants to do it, and it's going to be for a lot of next year as well, so I I don't know what people talk about, I don't know if you want to speak about that, Diana, or if that's not your capacity and other people have to decide on to do it.
In the recent past, there's been more being requests that came through for this that I wasn't able to make work, I don't know when they're being planned, the time of day. Um, I think Abby is making a response, specifically to be completely transparent, because she wants to be on the committee. So I mean, I'm going to be being on it, and if you want to be honest, uh, to be honest, I mean, it's great.
I don't care who's on the committee, I think if people want to be.
I don't know if I can make the time that they're, but I don't know if the T indicates anything related to the time.
It doesn't.
No, I I don't know when they are, I think we should maybe find out, I don't know if that matters to anyone else, certainly those who make the place work full-time, but um, I just don't want to be a hindrance and not be able to go, that's the only thing.
You just said it again to me that they had some, some design people coming in, they're going to be some kind of stations, so.
Anyway, I think in the, in the town war, um, I have no problem.
I know that, again, I I know that your, your first term here, you got saddled with a lot of the um town-related stuff. It's been a lot of work, so I know that there's, you expressed a desire, maybe change up your appointments for your next term.
Yeah, I, if I do get elected for another term, I was going to have to pay for a little bit of a mix of a booker's P I T C, because it's a significant amount of time, you know, it's weekly, and it's during the end of the workday, and um, it has been a challenge for me, yeah.
I know, I know Rich is doing the one thing with the select board, and then with the U G L.
I don't know if that's, if that's the one thing, I, I, I talked to the, I talked to the money, and then that, that might be it. Uh, I I wouldn't consider that an obligation. But I I I'm, I'm, you know, this would be something. But I, I, I'm, I'm, you know, this is something I'd be interested in, but I'm also, you know, Abby wants more.
Well, but, a-again, I, I actually think, I think it's good for school committee members to be involved in the town overall.
So I, I.
And so I think it would be a nice way for you to meet some of the people in town as well, if you'd like. And so if you have a desire to do that, um, I mean, I, you know, Abby, when you have a great desire to do.
I, I already done it and it is, it's a great way to, you know, keep in contact and, you know, we know what's going on in the town and stuff. So very great.
There's definitely some exciting things going on with that. That would be, that would be a part of.
And it's something that you're interested in, I think I would support you in, in, in doing that one too, because.
I think it makes sense though too, if you don't mind jumping over. Um, if you are on the master plan, it probably makes sense to hand the IC. Because it's kind of a hand-in-hand, so.
Talk about that in May, but yeah.
Yeah.
That's, that's, is that, this is not one year, right?
It's kind of three-year, you're.
But it's up, up this.
It's not for me, yeah.
Definitely.
Let's just get to the suggestion was it, it, it's filled us through May for this year because no one's on there and then we would.
Well, there you go.
Yeah. But yeah, but again, the idea doesn't make this case, it's either.
It would be the person who, yeah. Possibly, and this is no, it doesn't appear to be any risk of.
I guess.
The person running, uh, be sure anyone of, I'm happy to do it.
I mean, it, it, it's interesting, like, I, I think, it is, I, I think, I think, yeah, I would support that. I mean, I think the other thing is that it's, it's totally easier now, but I don't know what's going on.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, that's, that's generally true, so.
Great, do you need to know the time of the meeting season of work or do you think you'll have a couple of, a scandalous.
I think flexible in terms of, I don't get, why not, any, any, many times.
Okay, okay.
I would, I would.
Go for it.
I would support one. So, um, did you want to have a motion to appoint Rich as the member of the facilities master plan committee?
I would say so, month of May.
Yeah.
I saw that, Rich.
Well, we didn't ask Chris if he wanted.
I just see him standing there.
First one, please, please. Okay, we'll do a roll call vote. Janine?
Hi.
Diana?
Hi.
Rich?
Hi.
I'm an I as well, pass it by zero.
Thank you, Rich.
Congratulations, Rich. Only I'll be and then be LFI, I have to probably. I'll just say, Rich, Rich out, Rich, Rich out maneuver maybe. Okay, thank you very much. Moving on, we have secondary school building committee. I may trust either Janine or Dr. Daley can tell us what this is about.
Sure.
Yeah, of course.
So the, uh, SSBT for many years has, has voted, um, in our district. We, we took a look at this along, I think the facilities master plan offered us thinking about other committees as well. Um, I think that what we need to do is officially appoint, uh, myself, uh, as the superintendent, the servant of committee as, as a representative. Um, Mr. Uh, Sadi Kapadia also taking over for Mr. Hardaker. And at this time, Janine is the only usable committee member. So Mr. Chuck Rieffus, the chair of this committee, has recommended myself, Mr. Kapadia, and a second school committee member to be on the SSBT. We don't see there being a tremendous amount of, of meetings at this time. I know this was a committee that met, uh, so much over the years, obviously. Uh, but it is important to have it there. It's a little bit different of a group. Um, so Mr. Mr. Kritsch is partly writing and accepting resignations for people who are no longer either on the committee or on the group. But in addition to tonight's, uh, recommended appointment, they actually need to be appointed to the joint school committee at the select board meeting that we would need to schedule. I don't believe it's going to be long. And it looks possible that when this was done with the town, uh, we may enjoy the select board meeting for a certain amount of time without a jet item. And, uh, that, that looks to be how it was. I don't know if anyone was.
Yeah, I'm trying to remember an item, you know, because Kathy left, John came on.
Yeah, it was, when Mr. Wood Prep was added, was, was, was the one, it's a, we got fourteen was when that happened from the fight to the time of now. I remember that.
Well, you were obviously signed up because, uh, we didn't have a town administrator.
So we didn't, no, yeah.
Right, and so you're technically.
That's how we mentioned the select board, yeah. And I was just thinking, maybe it didn't need to be a, a special meeting, you just were COVID, you get four members and I did that, I, and then we moved on. That's probably what we'll do. But I think tonight you could make the recommendation to appoint, hopefully for me, uh, Mr. Kapadia and then the other, uh, school committee members, so.
Well, just a little bit of a background. Um, I've been on it since April of two thousand and four. And the last meeting that we had as a group was May of two thousand and eighteen. So we're not going to be too, too busy at this point in time if you want to recommend it. It's more of a, I think the state has mandated the X amount of people in this, you know, area and so.
And, and, and what are the chances of getting opposed, if you're on it?
Um, you won't. I was actually, um, supposed to be and have not, you know, but.
And you, you are actually there all the time. We should definitely, we, we should probably get Chris on it because he hasn't been around, he's been around the shortest. So there's no chance of him being on.
It's your.
How is it for what, what the, very.
It's, so the, it's dissolved, yeah. So like, if you run and you are here and it hasn't, and, and you're the, um, person put on the committee and it's not dissolved in five years, but you stopped, then the school committee would have to.
Have one on.
Right.
And it's not dissolved because we're pending.
Litigation, yeah. And.
Still a little bit of a spend, it's something.
Uh, very little.
Very.
Yeah. Depends on how those litigation.
Yeah.
They get more stable litigation, like.
No.
I mean, I don't care.
No, this hopefully has no, the SSBT has no.
Yeah.
Stay over because it's, the select board, they brought us clean.
We're putting a, we're putting a name in.
Right, it's whoever did.
If somebody wants to, if they want to, if they can, I'll do it as well.
I vote for Scott because he said he's going to read.
I'm going to do another way to brand it.
Yeah, there you go.
That's an idea, I think I own.
You already read it and everything.
Yeah, I got it, I got it off.
Yes, there you go.
Yeah, perfect.
It was.
So I move, if I may, I move that we appoint Dr. Daley to serve as superintendent representative, Mr. Kapadia to serve as facilities director, and Scott Buckley to serve as a school, as a digital school committee member on the, uh, that we recommend that, uh, joint select for the school committee, meaning, uh, appoint those three.
Okay.
Perfect. Okay, roll call vote. Rich?
Hi.
Janine?
Hi.
Diana?
Hi.
Chris?
Hi.
I'm an I as well. Thank you very much.
Okay. The work to schedule is the meeting for the official.
I'm a loser and I go to some of the select board meetings anyway, so. Um, okay. Second, um, well, I mean, we, if we do it on a Monday night, we could try to join in anyway, come here. Um, second reading of policy and like I said, let, let Janine lead us in the second reading.
No, I, I, I'll, I'll, uh, yeah, sorry. I'll let Chris take this one.
You were so nice last time, uh, to let me do it. You, you take it this time.
Okay, you want, you want me to, all right. Um, I'd like, sorry, to make a recommendation to move through proof of second reading of the policy, J H F B S R T T, uh, and sorry, N T, this track changes as delineated in the document.
Eight seconds.
Okay, any discussion? Roll call, hello, Janine?
Hi.
Chris?
Hi.
Anna?
Hi.
Rich?
Hi.
I'm an I as well, pass it by zero. Thank you. Evaluation, are we only doing superintendent? We're not doing anything with school committee tonight?
School committee is the twenty-second of May.
Supposedly, evaluation update. Who is reading, who is leading us on that?
It's good, great.
Chris, you are leading us on that.
Yeah, let me just pull up the, uh, the doctor.
Want to share your screen or not?
Um, yeah, I can share my screen. Hold on just a moment. Sorry, I.
No problem, Doctor. Does he have permission, Chris, uh, Chris?
He should.
Yeah, I, I just, uh, I was in the wrong group of tracks. All right, here we are. Okay, let me know if that's working.
Coming. Yes.
Okay. So, uh, yeah, uh, good news, Dr. Daley. We, uh, we like you. Um, so just to walk through this quickly, um, we all went through and rated, uh, your aggression for, uh, as you know, for formative assessments for, uh, just to see, are you on target, off target, or is there something that hasn't been done? Um, for professional practice goal to employ the continued highest level of, uh, effective strategic leadership in our study schools, superintendent will continue to engage and, and support professional development activities that will help develop the skills to teach and strategy development, that, now, professional leadership, leadership team development, and committee superintendent relations. Dr. Daley submitted, uh, few examples of things that he's been doing to move forward in this. Uh, they're available, um, in this window for superintendent comments. I'll just read some of the comments from members of the committee. Um, Mr. Buckley felt, uh, Dr. Daley's felt his role as leader of district. He's also been an integral part of this broader community by collaborating with other superintendents to help standard to reopen our schools. And also note that Dr. Daley portrayed a temporary strategic leadership in the planning and execution of our school reopening. Also felt confident that he's meant for exceeding the key results he outlined for himself in this area to launch and on target. Would any members of committee like to?
Call out individually, so I apologize.
Sorry about that. Um, but do you have to add any comments for, for number one? Okay, very well. Um, for student learning goals, superintendent will work to create the conditions necessary for our students to achieve at the highest levels in a hybrid learning environment. By the end of the two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty school year, superintendent will review each school improvement plan to the five schools and collaborate on the individual goals of each school. Strong cooperation with school principals and other administrators on development of administrative goals, activities and benchmarks will serve to establish a framework for elevating student achievement through targeted efforts. Um, and noted here is that the school improvement plan is coming into alignment, progress made. Uh, of course, there's still some work to do. Uh, any other comments from anybody on the committee? Okay. Great. Uh, for additional improvement plan, superintendent will use his findings from his first year in the role to facilitate the development of the school, district's new strategic plan, NRPS twenty twenty-five, uh, a strategy for the future that includes a shared vision and strategic direction within operating schools. The strategic plan includes identified objectives in the areas of teaching, learning, support services and equity. The strategic plan will continue to serve as a blueprint for elevating student achievement and providing an overall advancement of the school district throughout the year, through the year twenty twenty-five. Uh, comments here, uh, I think that Dr. Daley is on target here based on his commentary, but I'd be interested to see an update on NRPS twenty twenty-five. Confident that Dr. Daley is on track to live on the school by the first target of end of school year twenty twenty-one. I would also like to view in the NRPS twenty twenty-five progress process. And just for any members of the public, of course, uh, Dr. Daley, you know, need to go over this. This is our chance to give him some organized feedback, uh, and indicate any questions we have. Uh, any other comments on this topic from the committee or Dr. Daley, anything you'd like to add?
Sure, just that, you know, I'm happy to provide an update. We, we certainly were off track because of not having the time this summer during our retreat to do what we typically do. But we have been working on it at the administrative level. Um, and we do have some things that you share out. I'm just still working on, but I'm happy to come up with a time to present that. Certainly need for July.
And I, I think, I think what, like we said here, from your commentary, it sounds like you are. It's just we're, we're trying to see if you're on track and it sounds like you are, but we just haven't seen it yet.
We have a neat graphic and everything, so we'll, we'll show you what's completely working out.
Right. The idea behind a lot of the grading here, grading, for work for it, but why this rubric is really set to an on-track or not-on-track. And it needs more details than that because it's our chance to find out what we need to learn more about. Dr. Daley's chance to, to kind of hear that feedback and then use it to inform going forward. Uh, okay, for the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one school year, superintendent will prepare the district for the challenges related to COVID nineteen and explore design and implement school safety protocols and procedures needed for students and staff. The year. Uh, obviously, COVID has been number one, two, and three, a priority number one, two, and three this year. Dr. Daley has helped North Reading become a model district in our area. There's still a great deal of work to do though, uh, and as the goal now is to get all students back to school in a safe way possible. Dr. Daley certainly addressed the challenges related to opening schools in a COVID environment and implementing protocols and procedures that were well thought out and. Any further comments?
Clearly, I did not have an opinion.
Do you know, I opened the wrong one, I did a one where I went through and, and.
No, I wouldn't, I neither.
For some reason, Rich doesn't agree, but everybody else thought you were doing great, Dr. Daley. Uh, the superintendent will continue to improve upon his communication through the social media, his blog, and other electronic service methods, communication and informational resources among between school districts and community. Uh, use surveys throughout the year to get feedback from the community has been excellent since March. Any further comments? Okay, that wraps up. Superintendent will support a district-wide investigation of social justice and equity for all students and staff and develop steps of an action plan to be included as part of NRPS twenty twenty-five. Uh, notes some more as before here. I think Dr. Daley is on target, but, uh, we know that social justice is a goal for all this year, but perhaps we could have an update for some examples on how this comes to fruition this year. And a note that Dr. Daley's communication throughout this year has been extremely effective and also confident that he addressed the social justice aspect of this goal at several aspects of effort of the representative committee on various occasions. Any follow-up, uh, comments from the committee or, uh, by Dr. Daley?
I have one.
Please.
What are you going to do when COVID goes away?
I know.
Your day though?
I, I will say, you know, one of the things that I'm, you know, that was sort of a result of COVID was the funding was I, you know, we extended, um, to stop replacing myself, right, for the whole calendar year of last year. And, um, I, I, I just want to say how much my whole team, but especially having Mr. Clean now as the assistant superintendent, it's just, all of a sudden, I just realized, oh, it's like I have my right arm, you know, and my whole, my right and my left, you know, I've got this team, uh, of the, 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 Mr. Clean there. So he, um, is going to share and present also. I think it'll be good for him to give an update now a few months in. And I, I hope that we can almost combine because I think what he's going to be able to show you about what the administrative team is doing around social justice, the force that we're running and a few other pieces, I think that would be a great update because it's really, for me, my goal here is to make this, uh, organized for everyone. And, and I'm, I'm just so thrilled. And part of what I'm trying to do with, with Mr. Clean, my, my biggest goal is to try to give him the opportunity to do things that I never was able to do because of doing all these other things. I've been trying to take things off his place a fact that he's able to stay in district a lot, um, this year. I think, I think it's fantastic. And he's done such a great job organizing, um, some forces that, when, when I joined the course the other day, just as a, I don't know, sort of auditing the course, right? Uh, but to see all of the teachers that are in there, all the administrators joining together to, to really unpack this topic is fantastic. So I think that, um, so many of our, all of our educators have social justice as a goal as well as our teaching and learning. And then many of them are taking this course, others are doing book studies, or there's so many things going on. But I think, uh, we can, we can probably address that through a joint presentation when he shares as well. So I look forward to sharing that with you in the coming weeks. That's it. That's all.
Great, thank you. And, uh, that covers everything we had to say. We, uh, we find that you're on target for all of your goals and we appreciate all the work.
Um, thanks. So this is to the whole committee, but also to Chris. So you did the superintendent, so I'll take over the school committee evaluation, which is due March five second, the meeting, so don't do like I did and wait till the last minute to do the evaluation.
I just want to say, I think we should take about discussion in the summer about, about whether it feels like the right thing to do to not remove our names. I think I did it when I was doing the meeting, that was what I've had, but it does feel like we should be speaking publicly about this thing about, so.
You know, Rich, I, uh, and I, I really talked about it, Janine and I and Doctor Daly, and when I put up that, that folder and the, and the note, I had kind of gone with just on what we've always said, which was to remove the names and, uh, I kind of goofed right, right here. I should have put on the other file, didn't, but when I was reviewing them today, I was thinking, oh, man, I think it's better if we keep the names. I think it's a bit more appropriate if we do. That said, it was still, uh, I didn't mean to, that's very, but, uh, but yeah, I agree going forward.
I actually thought I had already do not on target. I, I already know, uh, us not on target.
Yeah, that's what I, I just.
Okay, thank you, everyone.
I appreciate the feedback.
Um, yeah, I will say one thing that was noticeable, like the school committee one was a lot more things than with yours is, I think, seeing Chris with the tricam, so.
Uh, what's the point?
Yep. Okay, hit it. And Diana?
I move to approve, or I mean, sorry, accept the January twenty eighth open session minutes at this.
Hold on a second. Any discussion? Okay, well, Janine?
Hi.
Rich? Hi. Diana?
Hi.
Chris?
Hi.
And I as well, five zero, thank you.
I'd like the option to accept the February eighth twenty twenty one, uh, open session minutes at this.
That's not second class. Uh, any discussion? Okay, well, Janine?
Hi.
Rich? Hi. Diana?
Hi.
Chris?
Hi.
As well, five zero, very much. Any update, Mr. Connolly?
Yes, thank you. So this evening is a quick, little quick update. Uh, we're all active available as the student activity for two reports, which reflect activities for first, third, seventh, thirty first of this, this area. Um, in the report, as we've done in the past, we can see the certified reciprocal account balances for the five schools. Um, and then I also included more activity of the middle of the high school of the countdown, so. Typically, I mean, kind of falls out in, in reciprocal reports, um, thirty four, I think, to tell it's next quarter. Um, thought, but I want that to be just for, uh, really start with this question.
Take ahead of me. Question or stop tonight? I think we're good.
Okay, I, I was looking at my, this is very big story, I didn't bring it in the pack, but the next one, March twenty second, I have to continue discussions on R M O D, um, going back really early in February to late January. So I had a conference call webinar with the R M O D representative day. They presented to me with their preliminary, um, presentation of what options could be, so they did an R I, you know, all, analyze that. They're gonna come on March twenty second and make that presentation. It's, it's, it's both more than that to fall upon, but they are gonna present to the full committee on March twenty second. Um, and essentially, they're, they're trying to kind of just talk a little bit about sort of high level soldier, how, how programs are, how, how they try and what their objectives are, the programs they're for, to save the, obviously. Um, the R I, I have to just kind of do a little bit of overview of the legislative process and how that changed, how that impact the extent of tax dependence that R M O D changed, really shifted them, um, what the options are. Um, they, I have to kind of do that as well. They are a walkthrough, their perspective of what our options are based on the R I that they got. And then they're gonna talk based on what you could expect on each option from revenue standpoint or approxating standpoint. Um, getting to talk to firm members, but it's based on the R I that they did and what their, what the analysis was. Um, and then they're gonna kind of do a little next step and go here. So that, that is gonna happen on March twenty second.
One, one suggestion on that, so when we ended up doing the L E D project, we had a, we had, we had a small committee that included some people from finance committee. I don't know if you were planning on doing something like that again, but if so, it would be nice to invite those people. Particularly thinking of, like, I know you had Wayne as part of it before, and I know that, um, Don Calhoun was a support part of that. I wonder if you might want to just see if.
Yeah.
If we're gonna have those people again involved, it would be nice for them to hear the presentation as well, I think.
Yeah, so I, I mean, maybe a little bit more, I don't know, we're not really analyzing like official R I or, or even it's more like high level at that point, so it's more like use of what we see from our analysis, if things have been done. See that what we see the options are, and then it kind of be like, do we want to, do we think, I think we have to decide after that presentation, in my opinion, to be skilled, like it's worth, like, like it's a project that I think makes sense, if you want to bring a power to your school, and do we want to pursue like an official R I at that point? Because then you couldn't be joking R I or just school R I. And then it actually develops for me to evaluate that R I itself. Uh, I'm sure that wouldn't hurt to have, um, more feedback, like, of course.
I, I think we should at least invite, you know, Don Calhoun, for example, and maybe Michael Burdo, if there's gonna be a town side to it, and I think it might be nice to at least, again, it's, it's, they're not required to go, but I think it would be always just let them know that it's happening.
And how, how it's gonna be, I think, how all the parties, Michael Burdo, when I bring all that summer.
I would let them know if they're coming down to our meeting, it's best in case they would like to, so they can at least feel the presentation.
This is a complex, the meetings will be recorded, we can share them. Right, yeah, I can, I'll do that.
Yeah, I think, I think it would be nice just because, again, I think, I think both of them have had really good, excellent feedback on different things in the past, and so including them early on would be nice, even if they can't make it. They at least have the option. Thank you very much. Staffing, anything else for Daly? Is it donation? Nothing right now.
This is the first time in a good couple of years that you didn't have anything.
Right.
That's odd.
Kind of like a treasure stack. We've received a lot this year.
I know, I know. I just, I just found it very strange.
Yeah, I guess. One thing I'll say about that, typically, I think in previous years, I found kind of four to two update on the C T O in mind, and, and we kind of decided that this is gonna happen if, if he gets over there. I mean, a one presentation at the end. Everyone thought that was easy this year.
How's today? Finance planning team, our second, I think, pretty, pretty standard. We went through the revenue, not much has changed with the revenue, and we had the first look at the town request, the first look at the school budget. Um, we have a gap of, we just went over it. Did we show the gap? I mean, we have a gap of, there was a gap of eight hundred and something thousand, and then they have a similar gap, although this is worth pointing out that this is just the, they're at the stage of all the different town departments that made the request, so they haven't been cut down or anything yet. But we always start out sort of one step ahead because everybody gets cut down by Doctor Daly and Michael before, you know, they didn't get here. So with the town, there are all different departments, so they get presented, we saw that inspiration. The county administrator will make his recommendations from that later on, so. I think we're about one point six, combined, we're about one point six, one point seven million short. And I will just point out that in years past, we saw that big number and it wasn't, it wasn't really a real number because they hadn't put that stabilization in there yet, or something they hadn't put in there yet. This year, they put all that in right away, and so I don't actually think the revenue is gonna be all that much higher going forward. It might be a little bit, like they, they cut, they cut down the health insurance expense a little bit with from seven and a half to six point six, so there's a little bit more revenue. Hopefully, there's a little bit more that can be found, but I think a lot of the stuff that in the past was held off on was already put into that, so. We'll see. Um.
If I may, I can, I can actually, for the first time this year, have an update on the Northham meeting.
Oh, nice.
Uh, they didn't have any meetings over the summer. They did a sort of test run on a virtual meeting in September, which stayed open for the board members. Then since then, they turned, since we started scheduling meetings on Thursday, they've had like two conflicts, meetings, and then, anyway, so I finally, I wanted to, you're still there, you're still there, and, uh, uh, so, doing whatever they do.
That's my.
What was it, that? I'll tell you before we.
And I, I mean, actually, I went to the C T A C meeting last night. It was their first, it was their first meeting, technically I have a liaison to that, and just a round table talking about something else. The new, the new co-president's there, so, uh, going, not being Steve Burdick, that's right.
The co-president, this is not standard.
Kind of a smile like that, I think, this is a pie for everything. Uh.
Doctor Daly, it was the twenty fifth of February.
Okay, upcoming evening, athletic subcommittee is March seventeenth at one P M, finance subcommittee is March seventeenth at three thirty P M, finance planning team is April sixth at eight A M. Administrative report, Doctor Daly?
A couple of, uh, things to share. The society security grant we received, uh, for the twenty twenty one, twenty two school year, so we applied again after two of the last year. They are telling us that it's gonna be up to fifty percent all new material and then sort of reinforcing us some very important material, so we are planning to roll it out with all staff again, uh, as we did this year. We just feel that it's, it's just a different kind of safety and it's, it's never been more important, um, that the, the grant basically covers the cost of, of the program. There are modules, as we discussed, and there are phishing simulations, uh, because as we know, if you don't know what you're doing, you click on something, it infects your district, and that, you know, the value added to, to this knowledge is really hard to quantify because the cost of, uh, you know, some kind of cyber attack ransomware on our, on our district is, is, you know, is very difficult to quantify. So we're going to have all of our staff participate that again this year. Um, I wanted to just share, um, before I forget, also just a shout out to our nurses, especially all of our teachers and staff have done an amazing job. Our nurses with the pool testing have really gone beyond. We've also brought in, uh, a substitute nurse, uh, Miss Steele, who's been fantastic. It really is working so well at the elementary. This Lombardi, our Florida nurse starting the pool testing at the secondary level. So I just want to make sure I should have as well. They've been just outstanding , um, this year, continuing to provide every challenge. In addition to their regular everyday jobs, they're doing all the contact tracing, and now we've added pool testing on top of that, and they've met it with, with grace and poise, and it's been highly, highly successful. And for them to keep everyone's, uh, you know, nerves where they need to be and to, to provide them with this data and updates, it's been, it's been outstanding. Um, parents have shared with me that they have nominated, uh, a teacher. Uh, it's, it's quite an amazing letter. It's, um, a little bit lengthy. Do you want me to share it, or do you want me to pull some highlights of this?
He says highlights. Do you, do you want to order to a factor?
I will definitely order to. I will just say that, uh, this comes from the whole class of, um, I'll just start out with, um, it's from October seventeenth. It was a great pleasure that we, the parents of Ms. Slavens, the first grade class, nominated Ms. Andrew Slavens for the Massachusetts Teacher of the Year. Ms. Slavens, um, is a teacher at the Hood School, and she is a first grade teacher. Uh, we, as we're trying to adapt the unique circumstances of raising and educating young children during a pandemic, Ms. Slavens has been a true beacon in helping us navigate the course while we support our students emotionally and academically. Before the current academic year started, Ms. Slavens sent out a welcome email to her new student families, letting them know she was working on making a classroom safe, but still warm and inviting. She included photos to show the students how the classroom would be set up, with death six feet apart, social distancing happen before. She also included photos of herself with and without a mask to give incoming students a level of comfort, to be able to see their teacher's face, and know what to expect in the coming school year. They're also sharing, um, that, uh, I'll just share another paragraph, that, you know, Ms. Slavens is truly exceptional, compassionate, intelligent educator who has helped our children thrive and flourish during these challenging times. She is the gold standard of teachers, who will be next one fit for this program. She's also our, uh, field hockey coach. She does a phenomenal job. I would say, you know, she is a highlight, um, when we visit our classrooms and seeing some of the work that she's doing. And for me, it was one of the first times that I saw, and many of our teachers are doing it, but with a, a first grade class, teaching kids both home and, and, uh, in, in classroom, which I think, again, once we saw that it couldn't work with even our youngest learners, it was something that was shared with many others. So, um, I, I really enjoyed working with her over the years, and I was thrilled to see this, um, email that's signed by all those folks in the class. So a really nice tribute that I wanted to share.
And what was that nomination for? Massachusetts Teacher of the Year. Will we, will we know anything until, it will be much later? This is the nomination. Right now, she's not, is she actually nominated for it, or is this?
She's nominated by the, they shared that, that she has been nominated by the class, that they put this together. So it's not, she's not at this time, I know, the final, I'm just, I'm just sharing this administrative report.
Well, thank you. Um, any, I think there's one correspondence you wanted to read in?
I did want to share, um, Ms. Antolini had shared an email with the entire committee, um, about, the, the central question is about, um, what our plan is for reopening. I think that we did discuss that in a lot of detail earlier this evening. Um, the, the message being that, you know, many children are struggling, not just academically, but mentally, socially, and emotionally. I think we certainly recognize that, uh, thinking we're all in agreement that, that we're gonna do everything possible to bring students back, and we, we'll certainly have a plan, as we, as we mentioned earlier tonight, uh, forthcoming with most likely based on what we're gonna hear tomorrow, that April start date. And I, and I feel that that, that's where we would probably set our targets, even somehow the, the state changed its mind, but I think that, uh, we're gonna get some clear guidance tomorrow, and hopefully some, something arriving from the state in the very near future as well.
Well, thank you. Anything other than future business? Next meetings are Monday, March twenty second at six thirty P M, uh, which is the middle school presentation. We have a budget workshop Wednesday, March thirty first at three P M. Thursday, are we studying for April fifteenth?
I'm suggesting Thursday, April fifteenth.
And that work for people? Thursday, fifteenth, uh, at six thirty P M, and that'll be the public hearing for the budget, and then Wednesday, April twenty eighth, will be another budget workshop if we, if. Any other, like, ten before ten o'clock? I'm voting to adjourn.
I so. Please wait thirty seconds until it's ten o'clock.
Thirty seconds.
I.
Okay. Well, well, Rich?
Hi.
Janine?
Hi.
Diana?
Hi.
Chris? I'm an I as well. We are adjourned at nine fifty nine. Thank you, everyone.